And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. In accordance with the open, with the requirements of the open meeting law, please be advised that this meeting is being recorded and broadcast over Lunenburg Public Access. I'll take roll call. Everyone is here except for Mr. Chenas. I'll ask if there is any public comment from the board. Is there any public comment from the public? If you wouldn't mind identifying yourself and your address for the people at home.
Sure. Tanner Cole, 563 Massachusetts Avenue. Good evening, gentlemen. Just had a quick comment. As a small business owner in town, I was hoping that the board would entertain adjusting, amending the bylaw so that you could put a sign in front of your building without planning board review. So my understanding is, right now, any freestanding sign requires planning board review, engineering, lot lines, property corners, setbacks, all that type of stuff. And it's just, it's a lot of money for a small business. I own a parcel at 493 Massachusetts Avenue. Wanted to put a sign out front. Honestly, the engineering costs more than the sign, so at that point, it kind of devalues the process overall. When we were in Lancaster, we were allowed to put a sign of less than, I believe it was 30 square feet. So you could erect a sign in front of your building as long as you were zoned properly in a commercial district, as long as the sign wasn't bigger than 30 square feet. So you'd go to town hall, get a building permit for the sign, and you could erect it without planning board review. So just wanted to see if the board would continue, consider doing something like that in Lunenburg and help small business, economic development, that type of stuff.
Are you talking like a permanent lighted sign or something?
Well, in Lancaster, it was basically no lit signage, so nothing with a backlight. You could have a spotlight shining on the sign, but nothing that was backlit. And 30 square feet is the size, which honestly, I feel is a little bit big, but neither here or there, so.
Mr. Chair, can we respond?
By all means.
But Tanner, I think that signs should come before the planning board, but I think that you should request for us to waive all of our rules. In other words, it is prohibitive if you go through the engineering process, but if you were to get an eight and a half by 11, or 10, and do this yourself, and then also put a little summary that says, "I'm requesting to waive all of the rules," I would support that.
Okay. So I've been through that process because the other bylaw that I ran across running my business from that location requires that any change of use, even in a commercial district for an approved use, requires planning board review.
Yes.
And I came in front of the board and requested a waiver, and it was granted, and I'm much appreciative. But my point is, more or less, I feel like, as a small business owner, that just puts another hoop in your way that you have to jump through to get your business in town. And if you look at certain applications, I feel it becomes a lot of work for everybody involved. So if you go down to Walmart, and there's a strip mall, and all those people have individual signs, every time a new tenant comes in, they should get planning board review, correct? It's a change of use. Every time a sign gets swapped out, planning board review. And in my mind, that just doesn't welcome small business and foster economic development. I mean, look at all the vacancies around the center of town, and these are some of the reasons that contribute to small businesses having a hard time doing business in town.
Before we get too far into the discussion amongst the board, this is something we can make an agenda item, so we can deliberate and have discussion. I hear what you're saying, and safety is a concern, sightlines and things of that nature. I have been to the economic development talks, and that has been a reoccurring theme. They want to streamline the process. So if you want to make a, should we make a request through the office?
Yeah, I mean, if the, if the board wants to have the discussion, we can put it on for the next meeting.
I agree.
As a topic.
I don't disagree with you, and we've been having discussions at the, I'm not sure if you've been to any of them, but the, the economic discussions that we've been having, yeah, the meetings we've been having. And I've recommended this several times already because it's been, you're not the first person I've heard it from.
Yeah.
So I believe it's, I believe it's important. I believe we need to get to the signed bylaw in any case, and absolutely welcome any input that you want to give us, you know, when we get to that point. I hope you can come back, but I'll take that, the 30-square-feet idea, and see where that goes and fits in the conversation.
Yeah, and I mean, just to flavor the conversation, if you put a sign in front of your house for sale, it's six square feet or so. Make it a little bit larger than that. Just something that a small business that's in town can advertise this space so people can find the building.
Something standardized, that they don't have to go through a bunch of rigamarole to get.
Yeah. You know, and I respect the safety in sightlines and being able to see in and out of an access, but if the sign's small enough, I feel like, you know, the building inspector should be qualified enough to come out and inspect and look, and if the footprint's small enough, it really shouldn't pose that much of a threat.
I'm happy to give you a spot on the agenda. We have a meeting on January 22nd or the 29th, whatever one works for you. And then we can research it, maybe seek some input from the building inspector and stuff like that, if that's.
I think one of those is a workshop.
Yeah, 29th is a workshop.
Would the January 22nd work for you?
Certainly.
All right, and we would have time to reach out to Gary. All right, we'll put you on the agenda for then.
And if you could reach out to me as well, Tanner, I'd appreciate it.
Thank you, gentlemen.
All right, thank you. All right, is there any more public comment from the public? All right, seeing none, we'll get into our first appointment. I believe at the last meeting, there was a pre-submital meeting from 40 Summer Street, and there were some outstanding questions we had in regards to the ZBA decision, and I believe we did receive some clarification. If the applicant or whomever would like to stand up in case we have any more questions.
Carlos Cerrero.
And basically, requesting a waiver from the rules and regulations for site plan approval and special permits. I was not here for the last meeting, but I did watch it, so I defer to my fellow members first for their comments, if they have any.
I also was not here.
No, I thought we had a very productive conversation last, our last meeting, and I mean, I support the waiver.
Yeah, so I think we just were, we were looking for confirmation on whether it was 50 or 20.
Correct.
So we knew where we could draw a line.
And it is 50. If you watch the, the ZBA meeting, it was clear. The motion was for 50. There was a script error in the, in the decision, which has been corrected.
I don't think we had any problems with anything else, so.
We got the correction.
Yeah, my only question, who would issue the dealer's license, the Board of Selectment?
Board of Selectment issues the dealer's license.
I do, I do have another question or comment on the conditions from the ZBA on November 20.
They say 20 feet from Summer Street.
This has come up before?
That is from the right-of-way.
The right-of-way.
So from the property line. I, I know, I've spoken with Mr. Cosgrove, and I know he's spoken with the building inspector, and my understanding of the proposal is to put a series of bollards at the 20-foot line that would be connected by chain and would allow for the chain to be removed for plowing purposes and, and other potential safety issues. And the building inspector felt that that was adequate and that would satisfy his need to be able to go out there and identify where the 20-foot setback is and not try to, you know, guesstimate where the edge of pavement is, and those would be placed by survey.
And would they have two entrances or just one? I mean, I see the setback, but.
Well, currently, it's an unrestricted curb cut.
Right, right, right.
At the time that it is rebuilt by DOT, they're going to be given one curb cut. And I, if I'm not mistaken, it's probably already determined with some ability to slide it in one direction or the other through discussions with DOT, but that project is outside of the town's control for the most part because DOT is doing the construction, so they kind of do the design and they work with, with the individuals.
Would be us to reach out to DOT?
No, would be, it would be the property owner.
Okay, as long as, they have, they have that understanding, then I'm fine with that.
I believe that came up at the last meeting, and I know I've said it to Mr. Cosgrove at least once.
Okay. All right, I do.
I have a question. What are you guys looking to open?
I'd like to see that within a couple of months. That would be, that would be nice.
And just also that, through the discussion at the last meeting, if you do plan to make any changes to the site regarding pavement and stuff, you would have to come before us for the site plan approval, so. Okay. I would accept the motion.
I have a question.
By all means.
If they decide to, I don't know, sell this land in the next two months, then what?
It has to come before us for a new application because it would be either subletted or changed ownership, correct?
Well, no. These gentlemen don't own the property. The property is owned by Mr. Kelly. They would be leasing the property. The site plan approval stays with the property, so it would continue for two years unless it were acted upon, and then it would just become the use. So by approving that waiver for the property as it is, well, that would, you're talking about the.
I thought in the ZBA decision.
The ZBA often does have something like that. So if the ZBA has a sublease or alternate owner clause, then the special permit would become void by product of.
Change of ownership.
Yeah, by product of change, and then they, you know, the new owner, the new leasee would have to go to the zoning board and amend the decision or get a new decision, which at that point would kick them back here. But by product of, of this group alone, the site plan isn't tied to an owner. The special permit may be, and that would then, a new special permit would trigger. Now, if they went and modified the special permit, which sometimes the ZBA will allow them to do, to have a new applicant, I'd have to speak with the building inspector, but I would infer that as long as they're not altering the proposed use, it's not changing the special permit in the use category, so the site plan that this board has waived would continue forward. Now, if a new owner proposed to change the building, to change the lot, to do some of the things that was talked about at the last meeting, that would then kick them back here for a more formal filing that had engineering involved and that kind of stuff.
Mr. Prockbeast pointed out that their ZBA approval is specific to them.
Correct.
Cease if they were to transfer ownership to someone else. I move that we grant the waiver as requested.
Second.
More discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. None opposed?
That's a hallelujah, gentlemen. Thank you.
All right, good luck.
All right, good luck. Best of luck.
We're all set.
You're all set?
Yep.
Thanks.
Thank you. All righty, moving on, the Stone Farm Estates on Riley Road, the closeout and bond release.
Good evening. For the record, my name is John Scrivner, representing Stone Farm LLC. The last hearing, we reviewed the peer engineer's construction completeness letter, and since I had expressed that it's my intention to move forward with reducing the surety by the amount that would be needed to cover these punch list items, I had asked the board to request an accurate estimate from the engineer rather than use the $60,000 to $80,000 number that was previously mentioned. We went ahead and did that, and that estimate came in at just around $27,000, which covers all the items on the list, as well as a mobilization, demobilization cost, as well as an escalation and contingency amount. So it's our opinion that this amount should be sufficient, and we'd get this project closed out.
It's a good thing you didn't take that $60,000.
I agree.
The intent of the bond was basically due to a case of abandonment, is what my.
Correct.
So, just not to be an alarmist, but the 27 would cover the work that needs to be done?
That's correct.
But if it was abandoned, where would the funds come for, like, plowing and things of that?
Well, at this time, well, Riley Road is a private road.
Right.
It's owned by, I don't know what the new entity's name is, but it's essentially the condominium association. So they are the, the current owner of the property. All the land, all the pertinent infrastructure. So they are required to do the maintenance and plowing and operational things. Mr. Scrivner represents the developer, and the remaining items are items that were not completed prior to the turnover from the development company to the owner, ownership. So these items are just buttoning up the last little bits of the, the construction phase of it. So all of those other things are now under the auspices of the condominium owners' group.
Okay, so if they failed.
There are some representatives here. If they failed to do that, then, then they're kind of just stuck. In theory, if they decided they didn't want to play their, pay their plow company, and we had 10 inches of snow, and they had a giant mess, and they had an emergency, and a DPW plow went out there and cleaned off the road for emergency purposes, that would be handled, you know, internally. But generally, the town will clear for public safety, but they wouldn't make, it wouldn't be part of their normal route.
Okay, I just want to make sure that if there was an instance that the town was on the hook for some of that, we would be able to recoup those funds, but. And is there anything in the original decision, just looking at the Fire Chief's letter, that stipulates that the access road be kept clear and maintained?
I believe it's included in the condominium documents.
Okay.
And, you know, I know over the years, the development company has kept it clear. I don't know if it says anything about the brush, but the fire department does have some, you know, some ability to go in there and say, "Hey, you guys got to clear this back." I've dealt with the owners' group. They're a conscientious bunch, and I think that, again, making them aware that that's something that they would need to do, probably not even annually, but just keep an eye on it. And, you know, it's something that's ultimately going to help their homeowners' insurance and, and their peace of mind, so I think it's, you know, something that, as a group, they would, would be willing to do, if it isn't specifically listed.
That's it for me. Any other questions or comments from the board?
No, we were waiting for this estimate. I'm happy with the estimate, so.
So I have a question. The, the desire to not install the reflective markers, is that financial? I mean, I don't understand.
No, that was brought up at the last hearing, and the board was going to reach out to the fire department to see if those, they haven't been in place all these years since this road has been, been paved. Since the last, the first owner's purchase there, which is approximately 10 years. I don't know if our department responded, but.
Yeah, he said they weren't really needed. I believe that was a question that was posed.
So are we basically deciding to hold back $27,000? Is that what we're leaning towards?
It's my understanding, right?
That was the estimate from the town's review engineer.
Are you comfortable with that?
I am.
I saw there might possibly be some questions from people in the audience. Is there any public comment or questions?
Just clarifications. Towns engineer that established that $27,000?
Yes, it is.
Yes, that it's adequate to complete the work, to finish out the project, the as-built Any other questions? I would entertain a motion.
I move that we. Well, how do you want this worded, exactly?
That you are releasing $740,984.25 from the remaining balance of $767,984.25 for a remaining balance of $27,000.
So I'm moved.
Happy New Year.
Is there a second?
Second?
Second.
Any more discussion?
So this is, this is the engineer's assessment of how much it's going to require to finish the completion of the construction that was approved.
If abandoned, yeah, if abandoned, right.
Correct. This would be the town's cost for the completion of the work.
And is estimate accounts for a 20% surety?
That's correct.
You have a, or 20% contingency. Mr. Chair, you have a member of the public that would like to speak?
My question is.
Would you mind stepping up to the microphone and identifying yourself, please? Thank you.
Hi. Elaine Rose from the Stone Farm Condominium Association. I'm newly elected trustee. I guess my only question is that if we're only going to be holding back $27,000, and if it's going to cost the developer $27,000 to fix this, then what is the incentive for the developer to actually do the repairs? Because it ends up even. And if things like, you know, doing ladders into manholes as part of that, you know, our association doesn't want to have to pick up that burden. So I just, do you understand my question?
Yeah, I asked the same question at the last meeting, and the estimated cost is $22,000, so there's a wiggle room here of $4,438. But the question, of course, is, you know, you're looking at a multimillion-dollar project. What's the guarantee that they care about the last $27,000 and that they're not just going to walk away from that?
Exactly.
But I don't know if we have the authority to hold more than what is required.
So where was that original $60,000 estimate from?
That was a ballpark from our engineer onsite the day that he went out to review. So, yeah, I'm sorry.
Through the chair, and I think what's important to recognize is that's a prevailing wage town cost. The development company submitted an estimate of slightly less than $15,000. So there is a $12,000 gap that they're, you know, they may spend 15 or less doing the work, and so they're going to want to recoup all the funds that they can from the return of this investment. The surety is just to ensure that the work gets done. If they were to say, you know what, we don't want this money back, we're going to go away, then we go through the process of claiming it, and I don't think that they want to do that. I mean, they have a reputation, they, you know, have a, a history of doing projects to completion, and I think, in general, companies that have, have done these type of projects don't want the mark of having had their bond claimed. Usually, when a bond is claimed, it's somebody who got in over their head, had financial issues and folded, and, and most reputable companies will, will finish out to the end so that that, that doesn't hang around on searches of them and legal processes and all that kind of stuff.
Okay, so is there an expectation, I mean, I know you don't have the authority for, I assume you don't have the authority, but is there an expectation about when we would expect this work to be completed?
Summer should be the, the latest. We can't do the paving of the sidewalk until, obviously, the asphalt plant's open, which is typically mid-March to earlier.
And we can only make them comply with the as-built plans, we can't make them.
Correct, yeah, I understand that, okay.
But we approved.
Okay, all right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. So we have, do we have a motion?
We do.
And a second?
And a second.
We're in discussion.
We're in discussion, yeah.
Any more discussion? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Take your things.
All right, moving on to the Lake Whalem Overlay District. So we have a pre-submital meeting planned for after this. So we did have two previous applications that we received opinions from our zoning commissioner and our town council. At the withdrawal of the last application, we did have town council with us to ask questions, and he identified that we should have discussion regarding our interpretation of the bylaw prior to acting on a new application. So we have, I hope everyone received the information. So I guess we have some choices whether or not we feel those opinions are adequate, whether we want to solicit more information from our new zoning commissioner or town council.
Mr. Chair, would you mind, for those at home, just summarizing the issue?
I'd probably defer to Adam to give us the summary if he says willing.
Sure. So, Chapter 250, Article 4, Point 12, is of the Code of Lunenburg, is the Lake Whalem Overlay District. It is 1 and 1/8 page of text. Within that text, under Section D, "Use is permissible by special permit granted by the planning board, number one is townhouses and garden apartments." There are two previous applications that have been submitted under that section for a development at the property at 274 Prospect Street. Both of these applications were withdrawn after very different issues of working with the planning board on what the submitted proposal would look like in its final state. The density of development on that parcel was a large portion of the discussion at both of those previous applications, and had, you know, varying discussions of varying success with the two different applicants. Currently, we have a third and separate applicant proposing a similar development of condominium style units on the property. There have been three different opinions issued to this board about the density of the property and how it would be interpreted in the context of the bylaws. The first being from the previous building commissioner that essentially said, "It's a special permit. The planning board is a special permit granting authority. Density would be determined as part of the special permit grant by the planning board. It's a subjective permit, public process, it's an allowed use. The planning board, through their discussions with the applicant, can determine, under the special permit criteria, what's an appropriate density and what isn't for the property." The second interpretation said that, if I'm recalling it correctly, and it is in, in here, that eight units per acre was the density, but that the applicant could request a lower density, but the planning board would be somewhat obligated for eight units per acre.
And that was the opinion of the zoning commissioner?
That was the same, the same building commissioner that made the initial interpretation that the planning board through the special permit process would determine what the density is. And then in January of, I guess, last year at this point, just under a year ago, the board requested an interpretation from town council, the previous town council, and town council at that time said the density for that parcel would be three, dictating that the, or interpreting that the lot size requirements in Section 5 were analogous to a density of one unit per 40,000 square foot of measure, and that anything above and beyond that would not qualify, and you couldn't do that under the Whalem Overlay District because the parcel at 274 Prospect Street does not have 10 acres. He also, at the end of his letter, I'll refer to it just because, so I can ensure that I'm stating it correctly, "One last comment, I understand the board has, there, I understand there has been some question as to whether the planning board is bound by the opinion of the building commissioner. In addition to this letter to the building, to the planning board, Mr. Savage wrote a letter to the property owner, and the planning board members may feel that the property owner or a subsequent owner may have relied on that opinion." owner or a subsequent owner may have relied on that opinion, and the town is therefore bound to honor it. Or members of the board may feel that they are generally bound by the building commissioner's zoning determination. This is simply not the case. In fact, the planning board is also not bound by the opinion I am providing here as town council. So essentially, he's saying, you've been given all these opinions, and you can choose to honor them or not. You're not bound by any of them. And I think what he's sort of inferring, or sort of saying is, these are opinions, and the board can act on the bylaws as they choose. And then it gets into whether or not the board's actions in respect to those opinions would stand up to any challenge that may or may not come going forward. And, you know, being that he's not council anymore, I can't, you know, request further interpretation of what he meant by that, but generally, that would be my understanding of what he was trying to say there, that you have a special permit in front of you, you can choose to act or not, and then, you know, whatever repercussions come from that.
Okay. So the question then before us today is, what does this actually mean?
Right. We don't need to make that decision tonight, but prior to acting on the application, if we get one, that discussion needs to happen. That meeting was March 13th of this year. It's reflected in the minutes. I did re-watch the meeting today, and we had somewhat of a lengthy discussion with town council regarding that. So it's just a discussion we need to have before we act on a, on a new application.
The discussion being specifically?
Well, basically, we need to determine whether an application of a density over three units is qualifies under the special permit.
Okay.
And again, we don't have to make that decision tonight, but, and I would encourage everyone to review that meeting on March 13th. Because if we determine, and again, if we, if the board determines that it doesn't qualify, then we reject the applica, or reject the, or deny the project because after we receive the application.
That which qualifies?
Well, we would move to reject the project because it doesn't, does not qualify under the special permit.
Okay.
And his advice is always to accept and act on applications so that we don't get into a constructive approval.
I'd like-
Excuse-
Like to get to the, the real question, you know what I mean? Are we, are we asking if the, if the application is even, if we can even entertain the application under the bylaw, if it is greater than the density that KP, KMP has told us? Their interpret- Where do we start? Do we need to agree on an interpretation first? Do we, yeah?
We need to, well, we need to receive an application first.
Well, yes, but I, I mean, I think-
His advice was not to prematurely make a determination until we receive an application.
Okay.
That is a discussion that needs to be had prior to moving forward.
Okay. So where does that leave us?
I mean, I, I think that you can reasonably expect an application-
Yep.
-based on the next agenda item.
Yes.
You know, it's, there is a substantial concept put together-
Yeah.
-that I assume Mr. Phyllis is here to discuss with us. And so I think the board, I don't think that you need to say, "This is the density that we're willing to approve," but I think that you need to choose a path of, "We believe it's up to the planning board as part of the special permit, we believe it's three," or, "We want additional advice from the parties that would currently be involved in any action that the board takes moving forward on any current applications." I don't think that-
Meaning through town council?
Either town council, the building commissioner, or honestly, it would probably be some combination of the two of them, especially where a previous council has written an opinion letter. I have had some conversations with the building commissioner about this, more of a, here's the historical context of what is on the table, here's the materials that the board has received, you should probably chew on these.
Okay.
And I know that he would, if you sought his opinion, it would be, whatever his opinion is, would have some discussion with council before he issued it, just based on the history and the, the varying previous opinions.
And also, they, depending on which direction we take, would have the ability to seek relief through the ZBA through a variance, but they would have to show hardship.
So can we just look at Article 5? Because that's really what we're talking about, right?
Yes. Well-
Well, again, I just wanted to initiate the discussion so everybody was aware. Again, we don't have to make a decision tonight. Do you feel that-
Yeah, but-
It is five.
I don't think there's anything wrong with having an opinion, having a discussion.
What do you mean, with the applicant?
No, I think, you know, I think Michael's looking to have a discussion about the bylaw with the board.
Oh, yes.
Yeah, so I'm saying, let's just have this conversation. So, I mean, looking at Article 4, it is, to me, crystal clear in Section E2 about dimension requirements of Article 5 can be modified if it meets certain conditions. And any lot that is less than 10 acres does not meet, you know, this, so then we just have to look at Article 5, right? And just figure out from there what's allowed according to Article 5. So what is allowed according to Article 5?
Well, I think that it goes, there's a couple of different things. We don't have anything that specifically says density. We have Article 5, the dimensional requirements of a lot of 40,000 square feet with an acre, with 100 feet of frontage. This lot has that. If you look at, I'm looking at the old numbering, I apologize, so it's probably five, a, it says one dwelling per lot, "In all districts, no more than one building on each lot shall be constructed as a dwelling or so used except as provided in Section 3.4." So if we flip back to Section 3.4, in Section 3.4, it says, "No more than one building designed or available for use for dwelling purposes shall be erected or placed or converted to use as such on any lot in a subdivision or elsewhere in the town without the approval of the planning board." So what Section 5 does is bounce you from Section 5 to Section 3, and says that if you want to have more than one building on a lot for dwelling purposes, the planning board must approve it. This bylaw states that the planning board is approving garden or townhouse style units. My interpretation of the bylaw, which doesn't hold any water because I'm not the zoning commissioner or town council, but is that the special permit process dictates the density based on these two sections. They meet the lot size in the underlying district. 412 doesn't have a minimum lot size. So their lot size is adequate, their frontage is adequate, they want one, more than one dwelling per unit through a planning board approval process. Thus, the density would be up to the board through the special permit process, and anything that the board approves would have to meet their subjective determination or findings under the special permit process for the requirements of approving a special permit.
Sorry, just to clarify. So basically, you were somewhat agreeing with the initial-
The original interpretation.
The original interpretation that the planning board has the ability to pick, choose an appropriate density.
Correct. It could be 150, it could be six, it could be one.
So essentially, what you're saying is that it trumps five, Section 5.
And Section 5 gives it that authority to trumpet.
Yep.
In, in the language by specifically referencing it.
Okay.
Now-
So, given that, okay, let's, let's say that that's true. So we are up to our own devices to determine what would be appropriate, what would be adequate?
Correct.
With basically the rest of our bylaws to draw and past projects to draw some inferences.
Well, each special permit application-
Or we can look at the application on its own.
Is its own individual application. So you may take some of the discussions from previous applications and say, "Well, you know what? They talked about this. I think that's great. Let's see if it applies to this project."
Mm-hmm.
What I will also say is Section 5 includes height requirements, setback requirements, and this lot has three, three frontages. So each of those, each of the lot lines is on a street. So you run into, there's a number of constraints on this lot that, in connection with parking requirements, you know, you're not going to get 100 units on this lot because you can't build that high, you can't get that amount of parking, there's just, it's not possible. But there's probably a wide variance of density numbers that you could theoretically put on this lot that may or may not be acceptable to the board, the neighborhood, whomever, as the project is, is developed.
Mm-hmm.
And I think that's where a lot of the discussions got hung up previously, is, you know, "We want this much," and the board's saying, "Well, we're not comfortable with that design with this much" for a variety of reasons. That's not to say that another project could came, come in with that same number that the board looks at and says, "You know what? This feels better," for whatever reasons. And being able to articulate what those reasons are would give the board the, you know, the ability to make that approval, or, you know, "We're not comfortable with this for these other reasons," and give the board the ability to make that denial.
I see. Okay. So in your, uh-
Professional opinion.
Professional opinion that, that bears no weight, as you've stated.
Well, legally, it bears no weight.
Right, right. You are suggesting that Michael Savage's September 22nd, 2015 opinion is the correct opinion?
That, that's the opinion of the three that I agree with.
Okay.
So basically-
And there were no waivers sought?
Excuse me. Not from Section 5, to my knowledge. And again, that application was-
No, under 41252. That was there. Unless waivers are sought under Section 41252.
Yes.
So, yeah, I'm just going to be clear, I'm not going to accept any public comment at this point because it's more of an in-house issue between the board and their advisors. I don't have to take public comment.
And we're-
You have the next posted agenda item. It's an in-house decision on our interpretation of our bylaw.
I'm here representing, uh-
Yeah, we're not there yet. We're, I think we're having a board discussion.
No, I don't want to talk about the actual project because I think the project's going to cloud the comments. And I would rather talk about the bigger issue, the bylaw.
Exactly. So that's the board issue, it's our interpretation of the bylaw. I'm not going to accept public comment.
And Mr. Chair, I support that decision. I think that we, it seems as if, I guess maybe I'm not clear on the conflict here, because of course, you know, I'm pretending as if I haven't seen any potential plans for this lot, or previous plans, and I did get the opportunity to watch the previous meeting. So in your opinion, Mr. Chair, what is, I understood everything Mr. Bernie said, but what is the conflict? The conflict, despite clear, seems to be density, is what's allowed, density based on the language of the Whalum Overlay. Is that correct?
Right.
Okay.
And just to be clear, density is units per area.
Correct.
And in this case, it's number of units per acre?
Correct.
And now, is that, is that a dimensional require, is that, is that a dimensional requirement?
I think that that would be a discussion to have with the building commissioner.
Okay. So there's, there's, there's some wiggle room here, guys, about whether or not that's actually one of the things that E or 5, conditions of use, allows in Number 2.
Repeat that?
There's a question of whether density is a dimensional requirement.
If it's per acre?
Well, density in general. I mean, well, because the Lake, the Whalum Lake Overlay District, conditions of use-
Mm-hmm.
Number 2, dimensional requirements-
Yeah.
-of Article 5 can be modified by the planning board. But we're, I think if it's not a dimensional requirement that's specifically listed here, that would be a ZBA thing, or it would not be something that we were able to-
They would seek a dimensional variation because they don't have the 10 acres, is basically what you're saying.
Right. So that may or may not be something that's within our purview. I just wanted to bring that up.
Do we have the ability to reach out individually for that information, or do you request that we recommend that we do it as a group? I, I mean, the three of us have the benefit of, not benefit of sitting through the discussions, Michael Ray.
I think that if the board-
I want them to get the information so they can-
Correct. I, I think it would be behoove the board to ask for interpretation if there's question about what, what the meaning of the bylaw is in some way.
Asking current town council or ZBA?
I, I would go to the building commissioner-
The building commissioner.
And/or town council. And ultimately, I believe that some, some combination of the two is probably the most appropriate.
Okay, so-
Because, well, and I say that because the, the, building commissioners are not bound by previous interpretations.
Yeah.
Because there's no permit in hand.
Yeah.
So what the current building commissioner would interpret would not necessarily be bound by any previous interpretation from any predecessor, even if it was 20 years ago.
Okay.
So, you know, he, he may look at this and, to muddy the waters, throw a fourth interpretation out.
Yeah, we've got a lot of interpretations, and we don't have our own yet, so it's kind of-
Again, just to be clear, through town council statements, it's just an opinion. It's up to us to interpret the bylaw.
I would like time to review because there's some, it's just some questions I have in my own head about, yeah, I got to read through this, "Use is permissible by special permit," and then "conditions of use."
I'm not, maybe I'm confusing on what the conflict is. So, I mean, I think this all seems very straightforward. Townhouses and garden apartments are permissible by special permit-
Yeah.
-in this district. I mean, that, to me, seems pretty clear. And if you're talking about land that does not have less than, more than 10 acres, then we're looking at Article 5 within the bylaw. I mean, that seems like a pretty linear pathway. So I'm not sure where there's any room for confusion.
The confusion comes in with Article 5 deferring to 412, which says that we have the authority to set any density that we wish.
I, I think you mean Article 5 referring back to 3.4.
3.4, right.
Or-
So-
Three point-
Whatever it is now.
Whatever it is now.
Yeah. So that's, I think, where that, the, the whole issue comes from. Where are we as a group? Are we, there's two ways you can look at it, right? You can take the interpretation by town council and say, "That's going to be my interpretation," right?
Yep.
Or you can say, "I'm, eh, you know, maybe, maybe I'd like to see something a little different there," because you have the out of doing that because of 3, 4, whatever it is now. You have the opportunity to say, "Yeah, you know, I, I think we could go a little higher there," you know? And you're still, it's a defensible position because it gives you that out, the bylaw gives you that out. So the quandary is, which opinion are we going to follow as a group? We may all have different views, and that, and that sets us all up for, for some form of compromise or discussion at least.
Well, I think that, reading through some of these opinions, I, I don't really agree with most of them. So, I mean, I guess my view coming into this is disregard all those opinions and then look at this with fresh eyes and come to a decision based on common sense and what is actually sitting in front of me.
Yeah. Yeah.
And to me, it seems pretty straightforward and clear.
Well, I, I think, and maybe it's because, maybe we're befuddled because we went through this before with the, with the last commissioner, and we had, and a previous applicant, and it wa, it did get very muddy, to say the least. And maybe we're all just sort of clouded because of that, you know? I mean, it doesn't seem as, quite as clear. But, I mean, for instance, I still am looking at the, you know, the question of E2. I keep going back to that, my brain just keeps going back to it and saying, you know, we just simply don't have the, we don't have the 10, the 10 acres, so how can you get past that? And now I understand, I'll tell you how, you go to 3.4. But at some point, I, I understand someone who takes, you know, takes the opposite view as well. So then I keep going, you know, further, and I start looking at all the other sections for all the other different types of, of housing, and they've all got minimums. I remember that was a big stink about, well, the minimum doesn't really apply. Every type of housing development has a minimum acreage requirement, from 25 to 5 to 5. We don't blow any of those off, you know? Those require a special permit too. So it's, it's a very confusing situation, in my opinion.
Yeah, I mean, I, I took the time to sit down with the zoning commissioner prior to, during the last app, and I spoke at length with town council, so I'm pretty clear where I'm at.
Yeah.
But again, it's up to each individual member to get the information they feel they need to, to make decisions.
Yeah, well, see, my, in my opinion, it goes, I take all of that into account, and then I go back to the Whalen Overlay District, and I, now I'm immediately thinking, you know, well, what can I, what, what would I feel comfortable with, you know, in that, in that district and that, on that parcel?
Honestly, I don't feel as a group, and this is just my personal opinion, that we need to solicit another opinion, but-
I don't think so.
But I also would encourage each individual member, if they want to seek clarification through town council or our zoning commissioner now, that they have, you have the ability to do that.
I don't think I need to, I think the density's 3. I mean, I think that's clear.
See, and I think that the density's probably around 3 myself, but not for the same reasons. So I can concur, but I can't say that I agree, you know, completely, so.
Matt?
Well, honestly, letter of the law, it's my personal opinion that our hands are tied on anything less than 10 acres to vary the dimensional requirements of Article 5. However, as a planner, I feel that this three and a half acres with town water, town sewer, very adequate access to a major route through town would be a waste to put three dwelling units.
So, well-
So I'm conflicted, but I don't feel that we, by the letter of the bylaw, have the ability to vary for anything less than 10 acres.
So just to expand on that, if the applicant wanted to seek relief through the ZBA, would it be through a dimensional variation or a variance, in your opinion? And we always have the ability to assert our opinion to them prior to them making their decision. So although the letter of the law speaks it, we can give an opinion, just like we did with Pioneer Drive, that, you know, we feel that they are deserving of relief, or, I think that would be more through a dimensional variation than a variance, because of variance, they would have to show hardship, correct?
Yeah, I mean, we are talking about a dimension, you're talking about 10 acres.
See, Mike, what is, let me, can I just ask you this question? Conditions of use.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. What, what does that mean in, when you, I'm being, I'm not being facetious.
No, I-
Is that, seriously, are they talking, because I didn't write this thing, are they talking about use of the overlay, or are they talking about use of the land in that circumstance? You understand what I'm saying?
I do.
Because if they're saying use of the overlay, then I agree with Matt. You can't even go to, you know, start messing with anything, because, you see what I'm saying?
I think that was the gist of our discussion for removing it.
I think that, I think that it's unclear what they mean for conditions of use. You generally don't say conditions of use for the overlay. It would be, you know, when you say condition of use in a bylaw, it's generally, your uses are this, and the conditions of doing that use are X, Y, and Z. Parking has to be in the back, you know, lighting has to be like this.
Understood, but when you read it, that's what it looks like they're saying.
Yes, and I-
Conditions of using the overlay are requ-
And I, I think that you could probably come up with arguments in both directions-
Yeah.
-for that. And I think that, I'll, I'll say it again, this bylaw's been beat up over and over and over, it's not particularly well-crafted. I think when you look at things like the PRA, or the mixed unit housing, or whatever it's called, they're very explicit on land requirements per unit, land requirements for the development, how you calculate this, how you calculate that, and this is absolutely silent, which is, is a, you know, an oversight, to put it kindly.
What would, what would that counterargument be? Because, you know, looking at the uses permissible by special permit granted by the planning board, and then the conditions of use, I would tie the two of them together and say that these are the uses that are permissible-
Mm-hmm.
... under the conditions that A, you know, or under the conditions that 1, 2, you know, 3 and 4 on the other page.
Right.
So to me, that's, I don't know, I guess there's no quandary here for me. I'm pretty solid in my opinion that, that if you're talking about land that's less than 10 acres, then you were not looking at the Whalen Overlay per se, that we are looking at just our general site plan approval process.
Yeah, see, that's, right, you're looking at the underlying zoning.
Yes.
Yeah.
And the underlying zoning does not permit, you know, developments that could be allowed in the Whalen District if they were on bigger parcels of land, so.
Yeah, it's like recursive, it just sort of like, it drives you nuts just reading it.
Yeah.
Ah.
But, but, I mean, I don't know, what, what, what is a counterargument to that?
Again, I don't think that you're very, my, I don't think you're varying Section 5 by allowing multiple uses on the lot. Even in excess of 40,000, based on 3.4, which is referenced by 515, which is a section, which is part of Section 5. So Section 5 limits one dwelling per lot, but-
3.4 is two dwellings on a lot.
It's the title of it.
Expression, so we could-
But it's, I mean, that's, that's the, the title, it says two dwellings per lot, but the text of it doesn't limit that to two dwellings per lot.
No more than one, right, okay.
And so, byproduct of special permit, through the open-
Help the approval of the-
You know, public process, my, my feeling would be that the board would have the ability, if they felt appropriate, to allow density in excess of one dwelling per lot, byproduct of the Whalen Overlay District giving that as a use permissible by special permit without specifically outlining lot calculations or unit calculations per square footage.
Which brings us to another legal point. We're a board, and we reserve the rights that are available to us as a board. So for, in, for the sake of conservation, we should retain those rights, and we should be looking at it that way, correct? I mean, that's what the law would say, right? You don't want to give up the right to-
Correct.
-have more of an opinion.
Mm-hmm.
Rather than less. So, I don't know, it's just, it's very, man, I'm just not, I appreciate, you know, those who have a solid-
Is there any other portion of the bylaw that would allow an applicant to dictate density?
Well, the applicant isn't dictating density.
No, we're choosing density, so.
Other than, other than maximum density, according to Mike Savageo's second letter, the applicant is entitled to eight units per acre, but could do less.
I think that's, that's clearly a moot, I don't think anybody's-
I think that goes against the purpose and intent of having a bylaw.
I don't think anyone is agreeing with that.
I don't think we should consider any, any of those previous opinions. Um, you know, I think that there's reason to question motive, I think there's reason to, um, you know, there's a lot of questions over, you know, how one person can have a, one opinion on one day and then have a drastically opposite opinion, you know, shortly thereafter. And then when you're looking at, you know, all the other variables in play, I'm not sure what was going on there. But I think it's enough to say, ignore it, and then look at what's in front of us. So as a member of the planning board, you know, the charge that I think that I have in front of me, I, my view quite strongly on this is that, I don't know if we're talking about a development within the Whalen Overlay that is on less than 10 acres of land and is very densely populated, then I think that this is a zoning board issue that requires a variance of some kind before we can consider it.
I'm in favor of retaining the rights, but, you know what I mean? The right to, the, the right to make an opinion. But I, I understand the opposite of you.
Would that be a question for the zoning commissioner? Possibly that, do they have the ability to seek a dimensional variation due to the 10 acres?
At point of order, just for the audience, the zoning commissioner, the zoning officer, and the building commissioner are one and the same person, right?
Correct.
Okay, so one position has been referred to three different ways in this conversation. So there's-
Mr. Rhodes.
Oh, sure.
Make it easier.
I'm sorry to interrupt.
No, no problem. Appreciate the clarification.
Thank you, Mr. Allison, for that.
Yeah, I mean, we can certainly, you can certainly ask him that question.
Is there any opposition to requesting an answer to that question?
No.
No.
I, I would like to find out that-
And again, we don't have to decide this tonight, and I'd also probably like to hear from Mr. Chenus, and hopefully he will watch the meeting and-
I think I can make an educated guess what Mr. Chenus would say.
But you see what I'm saying, though, that there's, there's two questions. There's a question of, of the actual, the actual question of whether or not we're using, use means use of this overlay. There's the question of whether we can actually come to some consensus on what density is appropriate outside of a proposal. There's the question of whether or not we have the right to make a change to that when we have it, when we have a proposal in front of us. And there's the question of whether or not we want to lock into giving up our rights that we have several opinions to say that we, we have the right to set it at whatever we want. So there's a lot of questions here.
Again, that's why I put it on the agenda, so that we could have, initiate the discussion. Do you know when town council's next office hours are?
I have not seen the request yet.
Okay, well, I would assume it would be-
I would expect, I would expect it's coming sometime soon.
-before they would be able to put together a full application, I would assume. I mean, the-
I wouldn't, I wouldn't make any assumptions about that.
Can I ask a couple more questions, Mr. Chair?
I mean, we have the ability to request time with them on our own outside of office hours, correct? If we have questions that need to be answered.
I can certainly get in contact with him if there's questions that need to be answered.
Okay, if anybody has any questions they feel are relevant for-
Oh, not for the, I have questions for the board members.
Sure.
If, we're still in discussion, yes?
All right.
So is it your position, then, that we do not, we, we actually are tied to the three, and that we don't have an opport, we don't have the right to set a density under special permit using 3.4?
I think that Mr. Bernie made a good case for why we could have some discretion on this. So I guess, uh, I think it's possible that we could get to a higher density. I think that the struggle that I'm, not, I wouldn't even say a struggle, I think that the-
Oh, sorry, let me interrupt you. Not even that, that we could get to a higher density, but whether or not we have control over whatever the density is. We could even go lower.
I believe that we do, with, with an exception in this Whalen Overlay, being that, you know, the use, there's a clear intent here-
Yeah.
-in Number 2-
Okay.
-to limit down, the density should not be more than eight units per acre.
Yes.
Right?
Yes.
So there's a limit, to me, the way that I read this, which is the intention of the Whalen Overlay is to say, if you're gonna build townhouses, you can't have a density of more than eight units per acre. That, to me, is, 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 is what the goal was. But I think that the, however this was worded, that the thought process was that all this is going to be on 10 acres or more. And then if you're talking about less than 10 acres, then you're falling back into just our regular rules.
Right.
So then you bring a question of, well, what are our regular rules, and how do they apply? And I think our regular rules are, you know, to me, pretty clear.
Mm-hmm. Okay. Is that how you see this shaping up as well?
Me?
Look at me or him?
Greg, Greg, I'm sorry, Mr. Bittner.
Yeah, I believe, I tend to agree with Adam, that we have discretion to set density.
Okay, so you see it kind of more my way, that we have discretion to set density?
Yes.
What's your, just ballpark it for me, Mr. Allison. How, do you see that as kind of the, the issue that's shaping up here, or?
Well, see-
Is it just the-
I, I see everybody stuck on the Whalen Overlay District, but I'm looking through here, we've got also, we've got mixed use developments, we've got planned residential areas.
Mm-hmm. I looked at those too.
Dimensional regulations, I mean, they go up to a number of units in a structure.
Mm-hmm.
It, it's the same. I don't, I don't see any reason that this shouldn't be looked at for a higher density development. I don't think that it should be forced at any specific number, and given the experience that we've had with the Butters' interactions, I, in, in retrospect, I don't feel that they were as concerned about density in pers, in so many units as they were what it looks like out their window. I think, I think that you could have a resident, a, a, a 55 and over development of one and two-story units, that you could get more than 18 units on this area, you can probably be limited by parking.
Okay, so before we get there, do you, would you agree with the notion that we have, it's in our purview to decide what the density is, regardless of scale, whether it's going up, down, whether it's 8, 10, 15, 25, 100, or 1? We have that, it's, it's our decision.
When we're writing these bylaws, yes, but once these bylaws are written, as they have been, and now we are charged with enforcing them, I don't believe the way they are written that we have that opportunity. I do feel that it is prudent on our part to at least request input, if not ask, the zoning board.
Okay.
The zoning board and/or the zoning officer.
Okay.
But in my understanding, and, and, and that's-
You're, you're saying to get some guidance, but ultimately, the decision, do you believe that rests with us?
Once the application is made, when, once we've received our guidance, and, and, and as has been stated tonight, most of the guidance has basically come to the culmination that you guys choose. This board makes the ultimate decision.
Okay.
Right, whether it be in, sorry to interrupt, but again, to, so if they seek a dimensional variation through the ZBA, that they, 10 acres is suffi, or four, 3 acres is sufficient for more than one unit per acre, that would still kick the discretion back to us.
Okay, so that's what I'm trying to get at. What I'm trying to get at is, is the decision that, the decision is ultimately ours, and that all of their opinions are opinions on what-
We-
We agree that, right. We can look at them as guidance in terms of what to accept, but we're saying that we agree with K, with, not with KP's study of the appropriate density, but the fact that it rests with us, their opinion that, the opinion, that our opinion is the opinion that matters, right? We agree with that.
Mm-hmm.
Ultimately, it's our opinion that matters.
Yes.
And that we can set that wherever we want. Now we can go out and get our input, correct? Once we get a, an applicant before us, and we can say, hmm, right? This looks inappropriate, or this looks appropriate, yeah? So one question is solved, we do have, we're not tied to KMP's opinion, we're not tied to Mike Savageo's opinion, and we're not tied to Mr. Rhodes's opinion. Whatever, they can give us their input, but ultimately, we're saying the density is ours to decide. Yes?
Um-
So we can't even get that far?
I, I would, I would say yes with a caveat, and the caveat being that in the Whalen Overlay, it's pretty clear, in my opinion, that the goal was for there to not be a density greater than eight per acre, that that was the overall goal.
Okay, so I would put that in the category of recommendation, right?
No, no. No, no, I don't think that's a recommendation. I think that that's in E2. That when you're looking at how we can modify anything within Article 5, which is broad, that we're limited when it comes to Whalen, to overlay, to keeping it to a density of no more than eight units. However, that's looking at a parcel of land that has at least 10 acres.
Yes.
So if, if, if we go into the intent, which I think is how I'm interpreting it.
Okay.
If you go into the intent, when this was written, it basically said, if you're looking at 10 acres or more, which is a lot of land, no, not a lot, but you know, it's a decent amount of land. So if you're looking at 10 acres or more, what, what we're, what we want is a density of no more than eight units per acre. Right? So if you scale this thing down.
Yeah.
Then one could say, well, if you're talking about three acres, then you could probably get that same density.
My question.
But I would say that looking at this, that we're not talking about, you know, that if we are talking about three acres, then this vision of 10 to eight, or 10 acres, eight units per acre, that, that doesn't translate when you're downsizing. And that if you're downsizing, in my opinion, then appropriate density is closer to three.
Okay, so you're talking about appropriate density and how you arrive at that, right? So what I'm saying, suggesting is that this does not diminish our authority, okay, over density necessarily. I see what you're saying. Okay, so this is kind of like a really strong recommendation, right? Like, it's gotta be within a certain parameter, right? And it's only, so are you saying if it's, if it's not 10 acres or greater, that this does diminish your, your power over density? Is that your suggestion?
Yes.
Okay, that's what you're saying? Okay.
Yes. If you're talking about less than 10 acres, then I think our hands are pretty tight.
Then you are, okay, your hands are tight. Okay. All right, good. All right, I got it.
Right, and based on that assertion, that is why I felt we could inquire through the ZBA whether they can seek relief in some way. Again, the way I look at it is I want to see something built on that property. Sitting there dormant does nothing for the town. If things are black and white in the bylaw, it's easy to interpret when it comes to the gray area, I will always err on the side of protecting the town.
Okay, this is very.
Because it's our protective bylaw.
Yeah, well, right. See, in my opinion, I can, I can go to 3.4 and retain that same power and make the same decision without my hands being tied.
Follow what I'm saying?
I do.
So, but that's interesting, I'll, I'll have to consider that. All right.
All right. Again, I don't, we don't need to make the decision tonight.
No, I appreciate some discussion sometime.
Again, as individuals, we always have the ability to seek advice through the zoning commissioner and/or town council. If he doesn't have office hours, I'm happy to ask Adam that we each get FaceTime or phone time with town council if you need. It's, it's up to the individuals, so.
I don't know.
I just want to make sure those options are, you're aware that you have those options, that's all. Whether you take advantage of them or not, that's up to you.
Okay. Good, I, I mean, I.
And again, I also would like to hear from Mr. Chenus.
Yeah. So we'll continue the discussion?
We can continue the discussion.
Good. Thank you.
Do you have anything further, Matt?
Well, I just want to correct myself. The mixed residential development is only available for five acres or more.
Yes. I have it right here, this one's five, two are five and one is 25.
Well, the 25 is cluster. That's a, that's a forced requirement of developments, 25 or greater are required to do cluster.
Well, it's five for planned resident and it's five for mixed res.
Correct.
For PRI, it's five? Yeah.
I mean, you know, when I look at the, the issue itself, or in a specific way, I say, yeah, I mean, it's clear that the bylaw is trying to go, it is, I agree with you, Matthew, it's trying to allow greater densities around there. But you also have to look at the overreaching, you know, where's the town going? And the town, I don't think is trying to increase density, it's trying to, you know, decrease.
No, my understanding is that when this, when this bylaw was created, the majority, this was one parcel of common ownership. My understanding, I'm not positive that's the truth, but they were looking at probably the potential for subdivision of it or whatnot. But, I mean, there's, the only thing I've heard is housing, housing, housing. I think that would be an awesome spot for daycare. I mean, there's all kinds of other marketable businesses that, I mean.
Yep.
240 units, and then it's right off of 13, and in a fairly dense neighborhood. I don't know.
Recreation, restaurants, you've got all kinds of possibilities down there.
And I also, you know, I want to note that I, I do support the idea of there being another housing development for senior citizens. I think that this town, you know, the, when you, you know, seniors are not necessarily exempt from having grandkids or something in the school system, but for the most part, you know, there are people who are not heavily utilizing town resources.
Sorry to interrupt, but I, I mean, if we're done with our discussion on interpretation of the bylaw, we can get into that with the, with the next agenda item.
Okay.
That's part of the preliminary.
I was mostly responding to Mr. Allison.
Oh, sorry.
Without, but I, I was, my comment is I think a lot of things can happen.
Yeah.
And the direction that I generally support is, you know, when it comes to housing, that if we're looking at senior housing, I'm naturally going to be tipped in favor of it, because I think that we need it.
I am too, I've been asking.
In our town.
Put it on the agenda for a while and have a discussion about that.
So it is something that in general, that I do support.
And in general, could we have that discussion as well, about senior housing? Because I'm not sure what the, whether senior housing can be, well, we ran into this before with people saying, yeah, oh, it's going to be senior, it's going to be this, it's going to be that, and then it changes. Is there any, you can't, you can't lock into it, right? You can't lock it in as senior housing. And does it add anything to our count?
Restriction, right? You can, yeah, if, if they're going to propose over 55 as part of a, like a planned residential area through special permit, you can, you can lock them in on that.
Oh, okay.
Add to our count only if they install affordable units.
Okay.
Rental, 100% count, for sale, it's whatever units they sell count against affordable. So the senior restriction doesn't have anything to do whether or not it counts as affordable, but it's the, the for sale or for rent costs.
Doesn't our bylaw require 10% if it's?
If it's over nine units.
Oh, okay. So for rent, everything counts?
Correct. And that's all in 40B.
And for sale, it's just the sold units?
Correct.
And if you want to add a discussion item to the next agenda, Dave, regarding any of those things, send me an email and I'll.
Yeah, I will.
Just think about it.
Yeah, let's see where we go. Okay.
So do we need a motion in a second for whatever it is that we've culminated in this discussion?
I don't think we really.
I don't think you really asked for it.
Took any action, other, I mean.
Talking to, get a couple of questions answered by Mr. Rhodes, right?
Yeah.
And that was it.
I only have one question that you want answered.
Sorry.
Is there, is there other questions that you want? I, I just want to make sure.
What is the one you have?
It's whether or not they can seek relief through the zoning board for the, the 10-acre requirement.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's the one I want to know, yeah.
Yeah. Those lively.
Moving on?
All right, moving on. So now we have a pre-submitting meeting for 274 Prospect Street. Do we have?
Well, I can look. It's a try and go.
Yeah.
You think?
No, it's right there in the corner.
Oh, wait. I, I know what the usual is, I'm not gonna, I don't want to put it up right now, so I want to hide it for right a second till, not the other conversation of what the, the plan is for a couple minutes, if I could. So, for the record, Wesley Fliss, Whitman and Bingham Associates, I'm here this evening. I know the agenda item is 274 Prospect Street. Before I get into the, the plan that we want to talk about, the concept, I want to talk about how we got here, I guess, a little bit, and kind of give a little history, and I guess how we got to the previous two smittles and to this middle.
Can you just give me your name one more time? I'm sorry, I know we've met before. But can you give me your name one more time?
Wesley Fliss, Whitman and Bingham. And so, I don't know if, and I don't know, Matt, if you were on the board when the Whalen Park project came through.
No.
But I know, I think Marjorie's the only one that was here at that time. But my firm was, the firm I worked for was involved with that project. And I know the former planner was a big driver of that overlay district. As Mr. Allison stated, there were only, I think, two, really two landowners that were put under this overlay district. One that was already developed, and this landowner. So only two parcels really affected by this overlay district, the way we looked at it. One big piece of property that most of it's already been developed, there is some part of that property that hasn't been developed, but it is over 10 acres in this piece of property. The way we looked at this, always from day one, was that it didn't need to be 10 acres to be, to be developed. But if you look at the language on that regulation, Michael, and just, the way it reads is the dimensional requirements of Article 5 can be modified with a special permit if you have more than 10 acres, which is the big item. Usage connected with municipal sewer, which we do, and then at least 10% of the residential units are 55 years or older. The way we always looked at it is it wasn't always looking at the area requirement, but it was always the rest of the offset requirements that it had. The front yard offset, the rear yard offset, the side yard offset, the height requirements. I can't remember what the other requirements, I think you have maybe coverage requirements in the zoning, but I know there are a couple other requirements in that Article 5, other than just the area requirement. And so as long as we didn't vary from those other requirements, being the offsets to the side yard and the front yard, that we didn't need to have 10 acres of property. And that's why, again, this piece of property's always been in that overlay district. It seems kind of silly that they would make a, a zoning bylaw that requires you to have 10 acres of property when you put a piece of property that has 3.6 acres, whatever, 3.7 acres of property.
Excuse me for a minute, I would agree with you, had that parcel been in conjunction with the 30-plus acres as that permit, they could have been separate parcels, but the development plan was greater than 10, if.
And I want to make a comment. These clauses are connected with the word "and," that is not "or's."
Correct, it says the dimensional requirements can be modified through a special permit if. We're not looking for a modification from any of the other requirements in that article. We're looking to meet all the offsets that you have under that Article 5. We're looking to meet all your front yard offsets. As Mr. Bernie stated, this property is, has frontage on all three sides of the property, and there's no side yard or rear yard offsets, all we have is front yard offsets. The project that you'll see tonight meets all those other requirements. Height requirements, front yard offset requirements.
Except density.
Except the density, which, again, because this property was put in the overlay district, it puts you into this overlay district. It allows you the flexibility of the overlay district. Again, talking to Mr. Allison, I'd have to agree with Mr. Allison, I don't think there's any flexibility with regards to the density. I think no matter what zoning district you're in, or overlay district you're in, you know, we talked about the PD, I think the two other overlay districts and then the cluster, it starts to put you, it gives you those requirements of density. And that's why I know before, the previous building inspector, we asked them, what's density? That's the big number, right? I mean, what's the density out here? Is it eight per unit, eight per acre? We're not looking to get anywhere close to eight at this point, to be honest with you. I know because at the last time we talked about eight, at eight, it would put us at 28 units. Okay? We don't want to be anywhere close to 28 units. I think that was something that was really hammered away by the previous boards, that that density is too much. I know the property, the other property that was developed under the overlay district is right at eight units per acre. But that's a completely separate piece of property. I think the, the question here was, can we get to a lower number, a lower density, something that may be transitioned between that eight per unit, I mean, eight acres, eight units per acre, to the adjacent properties over on Kimball Street, which aren't 40,000 square foot lots. They're less than 40,000 square foot lots. And so that was something that, to get to that point. I think, you know, it's always the opinion of the applicant and the applicant's attorneys, that yes, it is a special permit, and that you guys have the ability to grant a special permit, even if it's less than 10 acres, as long as we don't ask for any other variances from those dimensional offsets. And that's why.
So you've not considered density to be a?
Well, because we're in the overlay district, the density doesn't, the, the overall area doesn't affect us, is the way it was looked at. And that's how we even originally.
So you're looking at it as though the density is set for the entire overlay?
Correct. At eight per acre.
But it's not.
How?
By the restriction right here. You, you called it, it's, what is it? Just make sure I have the right number.
Not be more than?
Yep. There should be not more than, the density should not be more than eight units per acre, is what the density states right in that regulation.
But it doesn't say less than, I mean, you know.
Well, it says it can't be more than eight units per acre. We're not, even on the other projects, they didn't ask for more than eight units per acre. They said it right at eight units per acre because of that requirement. And to be honest, that was the driving force behind this overlay district, was that larger piece of property, and this piece of property got included with it because it was the only other really vacant piece of property in this area, that again, Mr. Allison stated, it kind of made sense to put this in here because it was a piece of property in the lake that they wanted to put additional residential units on that doesn't necessarily have the 40,000 square foot underlying zoning. It was to be multi, multi-use, you know, housing or so.
See, I, I, you know, in our previous conversation, I wasn't confused at all. But now I think I am a little bit confused in what you're saying. So maybe I need some help. I know that you're very early on in this presentation, but I just want to try to get some clarification from you real quick.
So here's, well, I guess before, I want to cut you off, is what I need to ask this board is, I don't want to waste my client's money.
Yeah.
And I would give my professional opinion, not to waste their money to have an official application. They got to pay us a decent amount of money to obviously design this.
Correct.
Have an application come in before you that's a full application.
Yep.
I think it's silly on their part to pay us that money until we have a final determination. Can we actually apply under the special permit for more than three units? I guess the way you interpreted. Or as that one interpretation says, can we be anywhere between three and 28? And in this case, we're asking for 18. Are you able to actually grant a special permit for 18 units? Because if you're not able to grant that special permit for 18 units, I'm going to tell my client, don't even apply for the permit. He's probably going to tell me the same thing, I'm not going to waste my money to apply for that application. I mean, it's just, it doesn't make sense. And that's why, that's why I was trying to get Mr. Bittner to ask, you know, allow me to ask the question then, because I think it's a grander question. I think, to be honest with you, I think the regulation maybe needs to be fine-tuned such that there's no gray area.
I think, I think most of.
I wanted to have the discussion amongst ourselves. I knew you were on the agenda next, so I was going to give you the opportunity to speak, but I think it was just more of a in-house discussion that needed to happen.
And so that's why I asked the question is, if, even if the wording was changed, that if you're over 10 acres, then you can ask for variances from the other requirements under Article 5. If you're under 10 acres, you can't ask for any other variation from those offsets. I mean, the language should be pretty simple as just that. And then you could put in there that it's still eight units per acre at maximum.
But so, dimensional regulations.
Lot area is the first one, so.
Yeah, but again, I said, the way this was, the overlay district was, it was really one larger piece that was already developed, and this piece of property, these are the only two pieces of property that are affected by it. are the only two pieces of property that are affected by it.
Well, I don't...
There's no other pieces of property that are ever going to be affected by this unless you change that overlay district, which there's no other really vacant property around there. Am I correct about that, Adam, right? That's the only other vacant property on this side of the lake, right?
Currently, I mean, you could look at the golf course, or the driving range, or some of those other parcels.
But then you'd have to go through town vote to get that into the overlay district.
Theoretically be assembled, yeah. In the overlay, this is the only vacant parcel. There are some other parcels adjacent that, in theory, if the town wanted to, you know, upgrade or alter this, they could, at the same time, pull those in and look. And I think that's a discussion the board has had.
There's some protection the board could have at that point to change density.
Correct.
As you get further out of the lake radius.
Lakefront, yeah.
Exactly.
So I want to step...
Oops, sorry.
No, we were going to step.
No, I... You've helped me read this, actually, so that's, you know, that's good, to know what your reading of it is. And I'm actually leaning, I hate to say it, it sounds bad, but I'm actually leaning more towards Mr. Jeffrey's opinion about the 10 acres then becomes, because that is the very first dimensional regulation.
So my...
Is lot area. So if now, if you say, yeah, you can change the lot area, if you have more than 10 acres, it seems, now it seems really clear that it's like, that's the limit. You got to have the 10 acres. You don't have 10 acres, no deal.
So I guess what I'm, what I'm, what I wasn't confused about before, and I was pretty clear on, but I, I have a couple comments. I think that it's, most developers, I think, have, look at our bylaws and, you know, sitting on the board, I think a lot of, there's a lot of complaints about whether or not our bylaws are clear enough on the development side of the house. And I think it's, you know, understandable that the people who are writing these bylaws are residents and members of the community, and that they're not usually in your line of work.
Yep.
So, you know, I unders, I hear that, but I also, at the same time, am looking for what was the intention when the residents crafted most of our rules. So what you're saying, and just so I'm clear on what you just said to me, is that you believe that the proposal that you submitted meets all the requirements of section of Article Five with the exception of density. Then on that one issue of density, that you believe that the whalen overlay kicks in and takes over.
Correct.
And that, and that you're getting that from the section condition of use, and you're looking at the density should not be more than eight units per acre, and you're saying that we're saying that it should be eight acres per acre.
Or eight units per acre. It has to be at least...
At least.
Eight, at least, at a maximum, eight units per acre.
Okay, at a maximum.
At a maximum. So at the maximum, we could do 28 units out on this piece of property. We're not looking for 28 units on this piece of property, but that's, I want to look at the bigger picture first before we even look at the project in front of you, because if we can't agree that we can do more than three, I guess into your interpretation, I think I'm wasting my client's time.
Okay, I think you're wasting your client's time.
And I guess I'd ask the rest of the board members, am I...
I'm not sure how you...
Wasting time tonight?
And I don't want to be, I don't want to be crass about that.
No, no, and that's, I, I...
I'm not sure how you're...
Honestly, I'd rather be, I'd rather sit here and you tell me, "I'm wasting my client's time," until somebody can tell me differently in the town, or a town official can say officially, "This is what the zoning should be," or "This should be what the determination is on this piece of property."
I'm just not clear on how you're picking and choosing what we can follow.
Well, no, I'm not, I guess I'm not picking and choosing, is, we were involved with the initial creation of the overlay district.
Yeah.
And this property was part of that overlay district.
Yeah.
So it was always meant to include this piece of property. Since it was meant to include this piece of property, it was always the thought that you could do 28 units out here.
But from an objective viewer, who maybe wasn't there at that time, how would they come to that conclusion?
How would they come?
Yeah.
If you look at the zoning map, yes, it's a residential zoned area, but then you have your overlay zoning district.
Yep.
Your overlay zoning district is your whalen overlay district onto this piece of property, which kicks you into this requirement. But as I, as I stated, the only thing, we look at it then, okay, so if it kicks us into this, we have to meet all the other underlying zoning offsets, which is pretty typical for any kind of special development, special permit type of development. You have to meet all the rest of the offsets, the height requirements, and that's why the other piece of property was commercial zoning, so they had a little more of a height requirement flexibility. This one, where you have up to 36 feet, so we have a little more restriction with regards to height requirement, for instance.
When I look at this, though, what this thing says to me, okay, is that you have uses permissible by special permit granted by the planning board. Townhouses and garden apartments, recreational facilities, restaurants, right? All of those recreational facilities and restaurants.
Yep.
Okay. So clearly, some of those would not require any kind of a density change, or any kind of density at all. I mean, you could stick with the underlying. It would be three, and you'd be fine with a restaurant. You'd have plenty of, right?
If it was, if it was allowed...
So you're asking us to make a jump to say that just because it was part of the overlay, the intention was always to put a housing development on there. But that's not necessarily what's, you know, I mean, you could still fall under the, under the overlay for any one of these good reasons. Correct?
Under residential district, I don't believe we could put a restaurant here, though.
No, no, under special, by a special permit. You could, under D, you could...
Correct, but you're telling me I can't do a special permit?
Sure, you could. You could do a restaurant, and the 10 acres is immaterial.
You can do a townhouse. No one's saying you can't. What we're saying is that, when you're looking...
The density kicks in only when you're talking about housing units, really, because I mean, there's, you know, if it's a restaurant, do you really need to, I mean, you're going to put six restaurants on there? You don't want likely, right?
No, you, again, you're going to do one restaurant and two houses, basically, and you're basically still back to the three lots in it.
Right. So I mean, I understand what your, what your argument is, I just, I have trouble making that leap.
No, again, I, just being part of, I guess, the process that initially happened on these properties.
Yeah.
This property was included for a reason.
Mm-hmm.
Again, like I said, I think the wording, and that's why I asked, if the board, and again, I know Mr. Allison's opinion, he feels that there should be more than three units on this piece of property.
Mm-hmm.
If the rest of the board members feels that way, well, why don't, instead of pushing an application next month in front of you, why don't we work to, we word this doc, this, this bylaw to change it, to make this property more usable for maybe it's, whatever you want to put the density on it. Whatever that number comes up that you guys want to put on it, at least we can get to someplace that we could just come to before you for a special permit, because we're not going to get a variance from those ZBA.
Of course.
I can tell you right now. I mean, we barely get a variance for a third entrance.
Well, I think it's only because the area is getting so...
So I could tell you right now, we're not going to get a variance for what we're ahead in front of you tonight. So what I'd ask is, if, if the board members can't agree that we can do this by the way the regulation is written now, I'm going to tell my client not to apply, but I think, is there, if the board feels that this regulation still should apply to this, maybe the wording of this regulation can be adjusted? Now, when's your spring meetings, what?
I'll be clear, my opinion is that we have the ability to pick an appropriate density somewhere between three and eight.
Okay.
I mean, that's...
Well, three, you mean, three total and 28, basically, is what you're saying.
Right. I mean, I'm willing to work with you. Like I said, if this property sits dormant, it does nobody any good.
Right. And a special permit, you need four out of five, correct? Is that what the, or is it three out of five?
Four.
For a special permit, it would be...
So we need four of the members to have that same...
And I don't.
And I know Michael doesn't have that same thinking. And I know David's on the fence, I think, at this point.
Yeah.
And Mr. Genesis isn't here, so...
Correct.
I mean, I'm not, I'm not...
And I think Mr. Allison's mostly with us as well.
I, I do believe that, you know, as I stated, and I'm sure you heard in the previous conversation, but we're not done with that conversation yet, but I do believe that we have the, the ability to put it where we want. And the reading of this, I still, I'm going to go over this a couple more times, because I'm not sure if this restriction does actually apply, because it sounds like, you know, now that we had that brief discussion earlier, does sound like it's a restriction on, not on us, but on you, unfortunately. But I got to go over that again. I'd like to see what you're proposing in any case, because I really don't know what you're proposing.
And that's fine. Yep. So there's a, there's another option here that I haven't heard anybody mention, is that the driving range is 8.4 acres.
Yeah.
My concern here is the verbiage in conditions of use number two. And it does say, it does not say that the parcel needs to be, but it does say that the development plan needs to be 10 acres or more.
Mm-hmm.
With your three and a half and an 8.4 acre, that's over 10. And if you could get the cooperation with that landowner, then there's no reason that there would be any required modification to that. It could just be a proposed group application.
Other than that, property's not in the overlay district.
No, but this parcel is. The development plan doesn't say that the whole thing has to be within, it only says that the area within the overlay...
I think it needs to be in, the land in, under consideration.
That was just a thought, I mean...
I am not, you know, and we went over this last year before it got beaten down at town meeting. We were going to rewrite this whole thing, because I was on, I'm, it's my neighborhood. You know what I mean? I'm in favor of getting this thing rewritten. I would like a little, you know, nice area of town, too, where you can, you know, have some walkability and all these lovely things that they have at the center. So I would love to see something like that in place there. And, you know, who knows? Maybe that discussion includes density increases in some areas and other things. It got shot down, so, you know. People got to be careful what they wish for.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Wesley.
Thank you.
All right, so obviously, we did a rough concept plan, just to have the conversation start again. I know in the past, you know, we've talked about the density issue, and in the past, we've come, I think, at, you know, 28 units, and then we were down to 24 units and the 22 units, I think, the last time we were in front of the board. And so now, we're at 18 units tonight. And so the thought here is to do 18 units, all over 55 units, obviously, under the requirement that you have there, it has to be two bedrooms units. Two of the units will be affordable to meet the 10% requirement. It's going to be, on the lower side, the unit's going to be a little bigger than the top side, just with the area that works. So the units on the lower side facing the lake will be bigger units. The intent there is trying to get as much first floor area as we can to make first floor living, obviously, for over 55 residents. There'll be walkout basements on that side of it, so there'll be, you know, obviously aesthetically pleasing to the lake side also. The intent there is to make these units really nice from the, even the backside, from that walkout side, such that when they're selling these units, they're obviously going to try selling these units for, you know, decent money, even when we're talking about over 55, you know, units. The top side, obviously, those units will be a little smaller. I know one of the questions that came, and I think it was some of the comments that came from the residents last time, is what's the side of the, the units going to look like that face Kimball and Pond Street? The intent there is to make those sides also look like a front of a house, almost have both sides look like a front of, you know, a unit, so that you don't necessarily be looking at the back of the unit. We do show a patio on that side right now. There'll be some kind of patio area that they can use on that side of the development, but the front there will be dressed up to make it look like a front of a building instead of a back of a building. And that's why we show the walkways the way we do, such that they can use the entrance in the back also for a main entrance, if they wanted to set up their unit that way. Tie into the garage, the units on the lower side will have two car garages. Units on the upper side will only have enough room for one car garage, isn't enough room in the units on the upper side to have two garages the way they're, they're laid out. We do show, obviously, enough room in front of the units, obviously, to have an additional parking space in front of each garage. And then we do have the additional spaces in the, between that island area for the units to use as a, you know, guest park or anything like that. One of the questions that came up, the request that came up the last time around, was to see if we could put any additional parking along Kimball Street. I know there was a big question about the town beach that's located there on Prospect Street. And so what we were able to do along the west side or the project side of Kimball Street was to propose 19 parking spaces. We have 11 on the top side of that entrance, and then eight on the lower side. That was the maximum I could fit in there with, kind of making it still safe to get in and out of that development. You know, we might be able to squeeze another one in there, but the way the turning movements work, it didn't really sit right. And so we were getting 19 parking spaces along Kimball Street, which we thought was a lot better than what's there now, and to be honest with you, it's a pretty decent amount of cars.
And that would be open to anybody to park?
Open to anybody to park there, yep. And the intent there, obviously, in the summer months, is to have the public be able to park there and then use the beach. And we do show a sidewalk along Kimball Street along the back of those parking spaces to access the public beach.
Great.
To come down Kimball Street. Now, it's something that, again, like you said, I don't think the neighbors were necessarily against the development here. I think they wanted to make sure that it was going to be aesthetically pleasing, but also, how can we help with the current issues that they have out there now? One of the biggest issues is, where do people park right now for the public beach? And they kind of just park wherever they can find some space out there. It's not a real safe place on Prospect Street to park.
Yeah.
And so we're trying to accomplish that by adding those 19 spaces along Kimball Street for the, the public beach. You know, obviously, we have sewer and water out here. We'll tie into the public sewer and the public water. That's, you know, pretty basic. The drainage, it will be along the southerly side of the, the walkout. Before, we had proposed a pretty shallow stormwater basin, swale-type stormwater basin there, just that you won't be able to really see it from Prospect Street, because it's going to be a, it'll rise up, you'll, that basin will kind of disappear into the hill, so you won't be able to see it from Prospect Street. You'll just see basically grass along that Prospect Street. When you drive along Prospect Street, it's be able to see into the, you know, basically see the backside of those, those buildings there. Other than that, like I said, from a concept standpoint, we wanted to show you what the differences are, trying to take into account some of the comments that came up previously from the, the butters. I know a couple of things that, minor things, that maybe don't show up on a small scale that I gave you there, but we did try offsetting the buildings as much as we could to kind of not make them so linear, straight across necessarily. We tried to almost make a little bit of an arch with the lower units there, and then offset the ones in the back by a couple of feet here and there, so there's a little bit of architectural jog into the, the two units together, just to kind of give them a little different of a look. I know that was something that was requested last time. They didn't like how, over at the Emerald Place, how they're just all in one straight line.
Yeah.
Tried to give them a little bit of a jog within regards to the, again, the shape of the lot's kind of an odd shape. When it comes to, again, like I said, we're trying to meet all the front yard offsets requirements and that kind of hamstrings the way we can offset those, those units. Even though we're not fronting off of Prospect Street, we still have to meet that requirement. And so that's why they're kind of set that far back from Prospect Street. But I think, from that standpoint, it works out better for the units themselves, because they'll just be able to sit up nice and high and be able to see out to the lake, from a standpoint of a, you know, viewpoint for those units. Other than that, like I said, that's basically where we are right now, from a concept standpoint. You know, the design won't be that much different when it comes from the last go-around with regards to how we're going to tie the sewer and the water in and the drainage and so forth. It's going to be similar layouts and that, but the biggest thing, like I said, we want to talk about is the use here, being over 55, being two bedrooms, having the two affordables. And again, I think it was talked about before, but, you know, they're willing to, you know, we can keep restrict that it's an over 55 development, that's...
The whole development.
Correct. And, you know, that's funny, because I believe, I don't know, is it the whole development that was just getting their bond released? Is that all over 55, correct? And I know, talking to the client, you know, he said there's, there's enough market even to fill these pretty easily. You know, he'd be excited to do an over 55 and be able to fill it pretty easily, so then I'm really concerned about having an over, abundance of over 55 development in town.
That was actually one of the reoccurring themes throughout the town discussions on economic development, that we were looking for more.
Yes, ever since I got elderly housing.
I think this location would be a nice location to have, you know, that view and the beach right there for, you know, people of, you know, maybe retired, you know, age or so forth, or getting to that point. forth or getting to that point.
How about elderly rental so that we can get a hundred percent of the...
It's something I could ask the client about.
There you go.
It's not a bad idea. I mean, we can certainly ask the, the town doesn't have the authority to control ownership model through the planning process.
Right, we can ask.
We can ask.
That's exactly what this is for, right? This meeting?
Sure, but I mean, even if you were to approve it and he said, "My intent is to rent these," and eighteen people came up and said, "I'm going to give you four hundred thousand for this." And he's like, "Well, that makes much more sense to me than rental." And he sells them, the town doesn't have any recourse in that. We don't have a legal authority to dictate ownership model. And this, you know, I know this is sort of a constant theme that's kind of come through in, again, in this overlay district specifically, but it's something that we can certainly suggest that we would like to see, but I don't think can have a bearing on how the town looks at approving the project.
So, okay, I'll ask later.
You can restrict the age.
Yeah, age restriction.
Age you can restrict, but not the, again, ownership. Adam said the ownership, yes. We ran into the same issue in the past, too.
Well, I think the fact that they would be over fifty-five would mitigate some of the, like, the car trips and things of that nature. With the, are you looking at two-car driveways wide or...
For the lower units, yes.
So the ones up top?
Upward to be only one unit, one car.
And these are, these are all two-story units?
When you, sorry, when you say lower, you mean lower down the hill or lower profile?
These are all two.
Right, right.
These are all one.
But are they all the same building height or the ones...
They would be within a couple of feet. Obviously, the ones up top would be just because of the width, I think it would be slightly shorter because of the pitch would be, should be the same because they're shorter.
Because that was one of the main concerns, and I know in one of the previous applications, they actually did some lower-profile units above the hill.
Yeah, and so the way this actually sat, and even on the other one, I mean, you're going to, they're going to sit, I can't remember, I want to say like twelve feet or twelve, ten feet lower than the street grade anyways, just the way the site's going to grade when they develop it. And so you're going to end up just seeing basically the second floor of those units and the, you know, the peak part of the...
And are these, how many stories, the facades facing the lake, are those going to be two or three stories?
At the most, and I, they're trying to figure out the floor plan to see if they can fit the second bedroom on that main floor. At the worst case, it'd have to be the three floor. And that's, it really comes down to that second bedroom and how they want to put it.
And you'd have like a loft, basically.
And that's basically what they're looking at to see how they can best fit that floor plan. Because we do have a decent size on that lower where it's a forty by thirty-six, I believe is what the...
Yeah, okay.
Forty-three by thirty-eight.
Two, so it's two-story or three? Yeah, I'm sorry.
The upper stories are most likely have to be two stories.
The upper ones?
Upper ones, because they're the smaller footprint. The lower ones are trying to figure out the floor plan such that they can do everything on one main floor.
On one main floor, okay.
They have to, and they might have to have a loft to get the second bedroom into it.
Okay.
Because, yeah, that's what I think when I think over fifty-five, I think this is the last house you're going to buy in a three-story.
And that's what they want to, and that's what they're trying to shoot for, is to have that, that main floor living area for, you know, for your bed, main, you know, your bedroom.
Okay.
And that's what they're, playing around with the floor plan because, you know, when we looked at this and took away some of the units, we were able to make the square footage of the building better suited for that type of development.
Okay.
And it's just trying to fit the garage in there and find a fit, everything else in there and also the bedrooms.
Yeah.
That's what they're trying to figure out how they're best going to do that.
And they have, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, go ahead.
They have access to a, some kind of parcel or lot or right away across the street. Is that correct?
There is a parcel A, yes. It's, yeah, if you look at, right on the lower right-hand side, above the signing block, it's parcel A.
Parcel A, okay.
With eight hundred and twenty square feet that fronts on the lake.
Okay.
I know they're having the complete streets workshop tomorrow, and I know the lake has been a, the lake area. Just from the previous applications, my initial thought when I heard complete streets was to try and get some sort of crosswalk and I know you had the, from the bottom right corner, end of Kimball Street across and then possibly have the town modify there so they could get a gate in there so people wouldn't actually have to walk into the road. I was actually going to bring that up. I don't know if I'll be able to tend, but...
I think the developer's willing to work with the town however best we can get that access to work into the beach.
Right.
Because I think, again, will just help their sellability of this development too to be able to say that, you know, you have the crosswalk, we can tie right into, you know, their access.
One of the other things that I've, you know, just in reviewing the bylaws recently that I think in the center district that, you know, I personally like, I don't know whether it's marketable or not, but is there any, have they discussed or has there been any objection to creating a common area where people can just gather, you know what I mean? Like maybe even just that corner on Kimball Street, like parkify it for the people who live there, you know what I mean?
Put like a patio with some benches or something.
Yeah, someplace where they can, you know, because that's really going to be their main view, you know what I mean?
We can take a look at it. I think the, I'll have to take a look at how the drainage sets up there, but there might be some room in that, that...
That area, yeah, in that corner, yeah.
Yeah, that's like some area that we might be able to play around with to get some kind of public space there. And I can, like I said, I could take a look at how that lays out.
Which corner were you thinking of?
Just in this lower corner?
The lower right-hand corner.
It's where they would cross over to their, to their frontage? Yeah, just so they can see the water, you know what I mean? Sit and look at, for the people up top, they're going to have less access, you know what I mean? Less accessibility to just viewing it, you know, sitting out and looking at the lake.
Well, my comment was going to be, question was going to be about intersection improvement. I mean, that intersection, Kimball and Prospect is horrible. It's a bad corner and it's a steep hill.
Yeah.
So if we could, and that was my question, was about the parking was provided along Kimball Street. Now, that primarily was driven by the public beach down at the end of the road, I'm sure, but what about parking along Pond Street directing traffic towards an existing rotary, which is, I would think, much safer? And then potentially improving the intersection there, allowing for a right turn only lane onto Prospect? And then even possibly you could have that triangle in there with some green space.
So if you take a look at where the parking is on Kimball Street, it actually extends onto the private property of the developer. And so if we did it on Pond Street, we wouldn't want to put on the other side of Pond Street because we wouldn't want to affect any of the butters. Plus, there's, you know, a couple driveways over there on this side, it would...
I think that was also as a, as a direct result of people on Kimball asking for some increase in parking.
That's where they park anyways.
Yeah.
Again, the developer would be up to putting the public parking wherever best would suit the public in this case. The thought here is it was closest to the public beach access and be able to park there and just walk right down. I understand, and that's what, something that we'd even offered up before is that as part of this, we could give some of the, you know, some of this property to the layout of Kimball and Prospect Street if the town were to someday come back and improve that intersection. So, but that's, I think, the issue there too, is that the layout right now doesn't, you know, that corner of, the intersection actually crosses over the layout of, onto this private property.
I have a couple of comments.
Sure.
So the first is, you know, when residents complain about parking in front of their houses and crowded their streets, I think there's two, there's different ways that that can go. One way is that those residents don't want anyone parked in front of their houses. And the other way is that they want more parking for the people in front of their houses. I think most people probably don't want anyone to park in front of their houses. So adding in parking spaces may not sell everyone over, but I think that would be helpful in the process. If, how long has this owner owned this property?
So the owner is still the same owner as before, just a different purchase and sales agreement.
Okay. So, and the current, the current condition as far as how well has the owner maintained this property? How does, how does it currently look?
Overgrown.
Overgrown.
Overgrown. Occasionally gets, I want to say a couple of years ago.
Yeah. I've driven by the area, so I know the answer to these questions. But what I'm trying to argue is, is not argue, but what I'm trying to say is that I think that there's potential for the owner to be more neighborly. And in the process of being more neighborly, that if you, and I'm a big fan of talking to butters, that if you take this idea, if I lived next to this land that has been looking how it's been looking since Whalen Park closed, and if I saw this plan of fifty-five older people with more parking for people to go to the beach, I would buy into this. And I would buy into it enough to find nine of my other neighbors to sign off on a amendment to the Whalen overlay, because it only takes ten for town meeting in May, and make a change to make sure that this kind of development is allowed. I think that if that is a process that's initiated on your end of it, and if you have this park and if you have these sidewalks, it makes the whole area better, right? And you're willing to make that little bit of an investment, I think that you can get enough support in the neighborhood to really make this a popular thing. And as an alternative, you know, show what else this land could be, which is something that most people probably wouldn't want, like a restaurant or something else in this area. But I would, I would encourage you to bring the neighbors into this because they're going to be your strongest voice of opposition. But I think that there's a lot of potential for them to get on board with you. And I would support this plan if we could pass it.
Yeah, explain it.
With more details, I probably would favor it.
Yeah, you know, this whole, this whole area, because of the town beach right there, it's very heavily trafficked in the summertime. The traffic and the parking situation is not ideal. Is there any room, and this is just a hypothetical question, is there any room for the developer and for the town to get together on the parking on Prospect Street to develop that, similar to what you've done on Kimball, just that lower portion along Prospect? Whether we can find some complete streets funding or whatever on our end, you know what I mean? To make this, if this...
To make it more holistic.
Yeah, this, you know, they've done a great job on the other side of the lake. It's very walkable and it's very, it's very beautiful and it's, it's a complete upgrade.
I'm not going to say that there isn't room for the town to participate. I think the complicating issue is the width of Prospect Street, the layout of Prospect Street, and the utilization of that portion of the property in this development plan. That is where their drainage is flowing to. It's all part of a swale. It's the natural low point. So pushing parking in there creates a potential need for additional earthwork, for additional drainage design, that kind of stuff. So...
And I think the other, one of the other things we were looking at too is not even necessarily that, it was speed of traffic. Prospect Street, you know, again, you said there's a ton of traffic, but it's also the speed of the traffic on Prospect Street.
Yeah.
Where at least if we're putting them on Kimball Street, the speed on Kimball Street's typically much slower.
Yeah.
So you're kind of pulling off onto a slower street.
Sure.
You have to come down to a controlled intersection, maybe because Adam said...
They're also dangerous.
Matt said not, maybe not the best intersection, but at least you're coming to an intersection before you're leaving out of there, not having to try to pull out onto Prospect Street in that flow of traffic. Granted, they should be slowing down coming to Rotary, but...
Well, you know whatever.
You know, I've been, we've been out there.
You know what everybody does. Yeah, they come, they come, they turn, they come off of the street, the side of the street, and they turn, they turn around basically at the bottom of Kimball to reverse direction.
There'd be a reason to add in some stop signs down here if this was a senior development over here in a park and...
Well, then you get into a whole nother bevy of regulations for adding stop signs. And I think that the...
But the thing is, is we just adopted the language through the Modern Municipal Modernization Act where if the speed, they can lower the speed limit to, what is it, twenty-five?
Twenty-five.
Yeah, and then you get some, you know, if this goes on the tips, you know what I mean, for design.
Well, I just, lowering the speed limit would be helpful. I mean, obviously...
But I mean, for widening the road as well. That's, you know what I mean? It's something worth looking, this is our town beach and it's very popular in this area.
And I don't disagree with any of that, but widening then gets into takings, gets into funding for takings. You know, this as a tip project is probably fairly low on the priority list. The parking on Kimball was actually requested by the residents on Kimball.
Yes, it was, yeah.
Because they don't have, the majority of them don't have driveways.
Yeah.
And they said, "Well, what's going to happen? I'm not giving them a place to park." They're going to be able to, so, you know, I think that the Kimball parking addresses some of the resident issues because, you know, I think, Michael, to your point, they either want more parking or they want no one to park in front of them. These folks actually wanted parking because they don't have driveways based on grade.
Yeah.
So if you, anytime you go over there, there's usually some cars haphazardly parked in the brush in some way, and this would give them a little bit more confidence that there's parking that they can put in there. You know, I think the idea of adding parking to Prospect has been discussed in some measurable way, both by this board and, and others in town. And I think that the speed and some of the sightline issues along that portion of Prospect make it, I guess hinky will be the technical term that I use, not impossible, but there are certain challenges to it.
Yeah, and I'm sure they don't want, they don't want to look out their windows and see cars lined up either, so that's probably part of it as well.
You know, I don't, I don't know that that necessarily is the case, since no one lives there yet. You know, you'd kind of buy into it knowing that that's part of what you're getting into.
Yeah.
I don't know from a sellability point if that has an impact. I think that the use of that portion of the property for the drainage purposes and the speed and the geometry of that area all sort of come to a confluence of it makes it a little bit more complicated than something like Kimball. Again, not saying that it's impossible or that it isn't something that would be workable, but there are certainly a lot more moving parts to it.
Okay. All right.
And moving parts that sort of exceed where this board is, as far as authority, because then you get into the Board of Selectmen, this road commissioner's into funding of it and all that kind of fun stuff that goes along with it.
Right, so I'd have to take that on as a personal pet project is what you're saying? For the next fifteen years. Okay.
Well, opposite, opposite this development parcel, the, along, along Whalen, the right-of-way is considerably further in from the edge of the road so that that would be more than adequate width going by the scale of the proposed parking on, on Kimball Street for parallel parking, lakeside.
Lakeside?
Lakeside. I don't know about the grades, there's no indication of grades in my recollection. It was fairly steep, so it would need to probably be a retaining wall. But the town already owns that land because it's the right-of-way for Prospect Street.
But you'd be on a no disturbance zone and we'd have to get approvals for that, right?
Municipal can get around most.
Yeah, we'd have to get around that. All right, moving on? Sorry.
That's why I was taking notes, Stu, because...
So it sounds like your client is not just, if we can't get this approved, then we're wasting time, that they, you sound like you're a little more willing to work with us.
No, and that's, again, he took all the comments that, you know, we had given him from the last time, last two times we were around and kind of just trying to draw plans that I think would take care of a lot of the other issues, other than the big issue is can you approve it?
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's really the big thing that hangs over.
But I think you could work on that, where your client can.
Yeah, we could try, again, I think, or...
Sounds like we're going to have some more discussions.
Correct, you got more discussion on it, too.
Yeah. All right.
Because again, the problem with that is there's no guarantee, even if we get ten signatures, that it doesn't get approved in May.
Yeah. Can I just offer you some suggestions from my perspective?
That's what we're here.
Okay. Scale of the neighbors' houses on their lots, if that's possible, just for comparison? And...
What I can do is I can kind of overlay it on the Google map.
Okay, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Even your reassessor's maps.
That's fine.
GIS is pretty good.
GIS works out pretty good now.
And their positions, just so I can see sightlines and that kind of, you know what I mean?
That's easy enough.
Just because when I'm looking at this, I'll tell you what I'm looking at. I look at, I take a holistic approach to looking at it. How is it going to fit in the neighborhood? How is everything going to interplay with each other? You know what I mean? I try not to look at it as a distinct, as much as I can, not look at it as a distinct project, but as part of the community. That's my area of town. I want to see it beautified. I think this, anything's going to beautify that piece of property. So, but, you know, it's got to be within limits, you know, so that's what I'm looking at.
I think this works great in the neighborhood. But maybe for the people who bought it, you know, maybe the spring, maybe the old cleanup project might be...
They weren't afraid to let us know how they felt through the first two applications. And I hope they come and speak their piece, too, so...
Yeah.
And of course, you know, we want to see the, all the usual stock houses, you know, what...
Right, and that's, I know, like I said, it's something that they're working on.
Yeah.
The client's daughter actually got sick today, and so that's what he, he was hoping to be here to kind of talk to you about the units themselves. And I know they're working on, like I said, the floor plan part of it and trying to come up with something like that.
You know, we're all fans of getting some more over fifty-five, I think, so you got that, that, you know, that's great. And there's some good things going on, especially with the parking for the neighbors and, you know.
You're like a good story of redemption.
We got, we got our work to do as well, I guess.
All right, anybody have any more comments or questions?
You have.
Yeah.
Yeah, thanks.
Thank you for coming in preliminarily, so it's not really holding our feet to the fire either.
Oh, and I think that was, again, that's what Michael was like, Michael's will come in now and he's obviously not going to be digging, putting any shovels in the ground today, so.
Yeah.
Something that we could start working toward.
All right, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Have a good night, guys.
Yep.
Thank you.
All right, we got some minutes to approve. I don't think I was here for either of these, but the December fourth, twenty seventeen[1619.76] I don't think I was here for either of these, but the December 4th, 2017 meeting, are there any questions or comments?
Executive?
Oh, the executive, we have not read those yet.
I've read them. I got an advanced copy.
The office?
Yeah, I went in the office.
Marjorie told me couldn't leave unless he read them.
Thanks, goodnight.
She told me that, I was there today.
That was a nice conversation. Oh, this one?
Pardon me? You were, I apologize for coming in. Well, can we approve the other ones while I'm reading this? The minutes from December 11th, 2017, any questions or comments?
Nope.
All right.
And I have none on the executive either, just, you know.
Okay, has anybody else read them?
Once again, though, tremendous job by Marjorie on those.
Always.
Thank you, Dave.
They were fabulous. I don't know how you do it.
And her names on everything now.
I was confusing enough just being there.
They leaving us?
No, just the end of the...
I'm with you on that, Marjorie, it's been a long day.
In the future, yeah, if we have an executive session minutes, I'm happy to come in if I knew what I'm, just let me know, and I can read them ahead of time. Maybe just send us an email if we have the chance. Oh, you did? All right. My bad, sorry.
Bob's gone. Bob's gone.
Yeah, I saw that. Waiting for the invite, huh?
Yeah.
Our neighbor moved to Pennsylvania and opened an inn.
Elder?
Elders.
On the corner of Pleasant?
Yeah, yeah, the glass guy.
Bob the Glass Guy, yeah.
I think the only thing you forgot was that one member of the D O S talked for an hour.
All right, no comments or edits?
No comments.
All right, other than that one. Moving on to committee reports, Capital Planning Committee.
We have met, I think, three times, maybe four, since I was last here. I got in just as we started getting department head requests. Let me see, the first one to come in was, was police, yep, and they had, I think it was just over $600,000 in requests. Then it was fire, they had about $2 million with three items requested, and then the third was schools, oh, the fourth, third was schools, they had very minor requests of about $130,000, I believe, and the fourth one was DPW, and surprisingly enough, they had very little request. Our next meeting is tomorrow, and we are going to deliberate about itemizing or prioritizing.
Did the police get their ATV yet?
No.
Is it on this?
It is.
It is?
With a boat this time.
Oh, with a boat?
And a boat.
Oh, nice.
All right, Stormwater Task Force.
Stormwater Task Force, we have not met yet. I believe our next meeting is in February.
February 8th.
February 8th, yes.
Agcom?
Agcom has not met.
School Building Committee is Ken, and I know they have their last meeting coming up on the 10th, I believe.
Yeah, I don't know the date, but they do have a wrap-up meeting coming.
MJTC?
Also Ken.
Also Ken. MRPC?
It's going to be on Thursday, and I believe Michael Ray is gonna step in for me because I've got baby duty, you know, kid duty that night, so.
And MJTC is, I'm back on it, too, it's, their meeting's on Wednesday, this Wednesday, but it conflicts for me with Charter Review, and they're having this one in Gardner.
Oh, it's not the Doyle Center?
Not this one.
Oh.
This one's gonna be in Gardner.
Bummer. All right, Open Space Ad hoc?
Yes, we are meeting Thursday morning at 8:30, Ken, because I'm messing up everybody's schedule, to discuss the chapter land over on Prospect and Cross Street, and we will have some kind of an opinion formed, I'm sure, at the end of that meeting.
Charter Review Committee?
Yeah, our next meeting is this Wednesday at 7:00. This meeting, we're having the town manager come to this meeting and go over some recommendations.
Green Community Task Force?
Ken?
No, that's, no.
Is it me?
Michael Ray.
Oh.
Used to be me.
I totally forgot.
Well, I can tell...
Yeah, all right. I might understand that there is not a meeting, right? Because this meets like once a year, so.
Uh, yeah, about quarterly, I did get the email that they are gonna pursue looking into with the Board of Selectmen doing streetlight conversions. A lot of other towns have done that, so.
You forwarded that to me?
Sure, yeah.
All right, so that way I can reach out to them. I apologize for that.
Yep. Directors' Items?
So you all have received the packet on the property on Cross Road and Prospect Street. I did an informal straw poll, and we do need to have a final formal vote on, on that, whether the planning board sees planning reasons for retention of the property. So I would open the floor to that discussion.
It's always difficult for me, because I'm a member of the Open Space Committee.
Correct, and Open Space will make their own recommendations based on the Open Space principles. Planning would be, you know, is there a demonstrable planning benefit to the town to retain the parcel? You know, would the town develop it for business or other purposes, those kind of things?
Well, I'm gonna go to the broad definition of planning and say that I think it's important for us to remain a rural community, and so I will continue to always support us purchasing land as it becomes available.
Dave, from a planning standpoint?
From a planning standpoint, actually, I feel similarly. I, I am all for grabbing up anything that we can to keep it open.
I really, it's got sewer running in front of it. Other than that, I don't see any great value to it on a planning perspective, and also buying up land just reduces our tax rule.
I had sent out of my comments, I tend to agree with Matthew as a resident, I would like to see it retained, but from a financial standpoint, I don't think it's feasible for the town. If it was connected to the lake in some way or gave us some more lake access, I would probably have a different opinion, but for me, from a planning standpoint, I don't feel it's any benefit to the town, really.
So that's 2-4, 2 against?
Yeah.
Yeah, we talked about it.
Yeah, I mean, you could pull the whole town, you're gonna get the same, you know what I mean?
Did Ken provide any input or no?
He did, but, you know, unfortunately, that's not part of the official decision-making process.
Right.
So we're just split on it, basically?
Yeah, I mean, what I'll do is I'll write them a memo that says we have two members who feel that, you know, the value from the planning perspective and cost isn't, isn't what they, they think is worth pursuing, and two who feel that any purchase of vacant land is, is something the town should pursue. They'll take that as they will, I mean, you could all say yes.
Well, I mean, I should qualify that. The reason why I like that piece of property for that reason, for acquiring it, is because of its, it's part of a larger parcel which is adjacent to a much larger parcel, and I think the town has some interest in that larger one. It would give us access on the, a rural road eventually, but it's a long, it's a long-term view, and I'm not sure, like they said, I'm not sure about the, and we'll discuss this at the Open Space meeting as well, I'm not sure about the wisdom of trying to capture a piece of property a little pieces of time, you know what I mean? Seems ridiculous to me. But, that said, I still think, because of its proximity to the farm over on Prospect, it's valuable.
All righty, District Local Technical Assistance?
So at the last meeting, we distributed the DLTA information, looking for any thoughts that the, the board may wish to put forward as, as projects. The town is continuing to pursue the economic development process through this, and they're working, I believe they're working with DLTA on the Green Communities competitive grants to fund some other projects within the town for energy efficiency upgrades. So, you know, the, the priority development area projects, you know, if we're looking at this for, you know, planning ahead for housing, we have a, a housing production plan, it goes through 2020, so we could set, we could work with them to set further priorities for housing. I think we have identified that the town has a fair amount of housing coming forward. There is a substantial senior development that has approached the town on building out tens of units of senior housing that would be rental housing and would be part of an existing development, so it would all be considered affordable, so it would, it would up our numbers, so I think that there's some...
Is that on summer? Or is that not? Where are you talking about?
Uh, I'm trying, trying, Ken.
Trying.
They've, they've, they're looking to modify their existing plan to eliminate the remaining family units and transfer them over to senior units. They're finalizing development proposal, they haven't submitted anything yet, they've submitted an opinion letter to the board, which we're having reviewed by Town Council, just to ensure that what their council is saying, our, our council would agree with. But it's, after having read it, I think that they're making an, an argument that's reasonable, and, and they, they should be probably coming forward in the next three to six months with a, with a finalized proposal to make that alteration. Planning ahead for growth, you know, some of the stuff that they have on here, economic development self-assessment tool, priority development areas, Economic Development Project Subject to Permanent Extension Act, I think what the town is doing right now in respect to economic development is identifying if they want economic development, and if they do, what they want, so I think some of those things may be premature. The self-assessment tool kind of gives you a report card on, on where you're at as a community as far as attracting economic development, but I, I think that doing so before the town's really identified what they want or if they want, it may be, I don't wanna say good money after bad, but it may, may not necessarily be something the town wants for a report card, because we don't know what we're grading ourselves against.
All right.
So, you know, it was more, we put it on from the last agenda, looking to see if the board had any, any thoughts that they felt, you know, should be solicited, and so it's just a follow-up on that. Pioneer Drive did get their approval through the zoning board for the third driveway, so I expect early February, we should see them back in front of the board for their amendment to the site plan. So that will come as it does, I don't know where they are as far as finalizing those plans. I expect they'll get sent out to Jeff just for a secondary checkup. They're probably pretty similar to what the original plans submitted were, so they have all of his draft comments, and it would just be ensuring that they addressed any of those comments as they came back.
When is Unitil supposed to be completed?
When they're done.
Roughly?
I would expect sometime this spring or summer they should be done. You know, I, I think especially with a, a building that big, it, it really depends on how quickly they can get the systems put in and then, then get the inside closed up. I think with Bomba Genesis over the last couple of weeks, they've, they've either hunkered down or, or been working really, really slowly, because I don't think that even with those giant torpedo eaters, they're not gonna get the inside of that building really warm enough to, to make substantial progress.
I was gonna say, once those disappear, you know, they're making good progress.
And, I had a brain freeze. So, you know, over this period, we tend to have not a lot of activity, because everybody's kind of doing their holiday thing, so we haven't seen a lot of people coming through. And, you know, the really, the only other thing we have that's come out is the recreational marijuana draft regulations. You all get a copy of those. I thought we'd go through them page by page tonight and talk about them.
Yes!
I wanted you guys to have them, because we're going to have to develop some, some zoning requirements that go along with recreational marijuana. I, I haven't done a really in-depth read of them, but leafing through them, I don't know that they're necessarily going to have too much information on how we zone it, because we're restricted in time, place, and manner, so we're just identifying where we might allow them, how we might allow them, what hours, and then coding that into the zoning. The licensing process is essentially run through the state. It's sort of the flip of the alcohol licensing, where the town has sort of first crack at it, and then the state sort of rubber stamps the approval. My understanding of it, and, and again, I haven't read it very thoroughly, but is that they apply to the state, the state sends the town something that says, can they do this in your town? The town says yes or no, and then it goes back to the state, and they do all the, the real heavy lifting on the background checks and approval and that kind of stuff, but...
Is it safe to assume that this is gonna be under discussion at the Bull Run when the, they have that meeting, and are you intending on going?
I, I won't be at the, the meeting at the Bull Run.
You won't?
No.
I was planning to go.
Are you planning on going?
It is, I mean, I guess, I would say you're with the legislative delegation, anything is kind of on the table. I mean, you're talking economic development.
Well, I talk about, they're talking a lot about Representative, not Benson, not Jen Benson?
Flanagan.
Flanagan, just being appointed to the commission.
Yes, so, you know, I mean, I think that when you get into economic development, this was sold as a, you know, as a moneymaker for the state, so I, I think it's, you know, especially with the timing, it's natural for, for those sort of things to, to come up as a, as a possibility.
Yeah.
Just the definitions in used table, I wasn't at the last meeting, the workshop is intended to cover that?
The intent was that that would be a potential meeting, should it be necessary to button up things under the definitions.
And you said we were gonna get through page 50, I thought, or something like that? I can sit down and talk to you about that.
I think what we talked about was, yeah, up to page 50 of, of the draft from December 11th, which is up to the special uses. So that wouldn't touch solar or marijuana.
Yeah. Is that where we are now? Definitions of used table?
Sure.
Sorry. Who's kind of having a little conversation, sidebar? Is that where we are?
Yeah.
Okay. I went through it, like, the, up until the, up, all the way up into the overlay districts.
Yep.
And I just got like Scrivener's Errors type stuff.
Sure.
But there are a couple of topics that I wanted to cover. The, in a couple of places, you mentioned, any...
Page?
It's in several pages, hold on, I'm on page 7. is, sorry, catering services 8? Any permissible accessory use that comprises greater than 35% of the gross floor area may be allowed by special permit from the Zoning Board of Appeals. Not necessarily that one, but the one that says any changes? No, that's the one, yeah. Is this necessary to state? Isn't that what the ZBA is for? I mean, isn't that just a standard dimensional variation? Isn't that common knowledge that if you wanted to, you know, to apply for a dimensional variation, you would go to the ZBA?
Yes, you could, you could do it that way.
I was just questioning whether it's necessary to, to put in there.
Is it necessary? No. I put it in there thinking that if we're talking about accessory uses, and we're saying 35% of the use, you know, accessories by right or special permit, depending on how it is, just coding that allowable special permit over 35% as a special permit eliminates the need for someone to, you know, go back and forth about, oh, can I do it? Well, it says 35%, but it's really 37%, and then say, oh, well, that's a dimension, you can get a dimensional variation, and just code it as an accessory use over 35% special permit.
Okay. So, I mean, it shows up several places.
It's essentially the same process.
Okay.
Because it's both special permit, but you'd be doing it under this specific...
Reason.
Yes, or that specific section of the code.
Okay.
As opposed to doing it as a dimensional variation.
Okay.
So I, I think it's cleaner, just because it, it locks it all into one.
Okay.
And they're, they're looking at it saying, okay, this is accessory use over 35% of the floor area, and we're looking at it for that specific reason, not, oh, well, what's the dimension? Oh, why, you know, how, this, that, and the other thing.
Okay. But if you think so, that's fine, I just, I just, you know, I didn't wanna get into a situation where, okay, but there are other places where we don't say that, you know what I mean? And that shouldn't you call that out every time? You know, where it might have been handled with a note, you know, somewhere on the bottom.
Sure, I tried to just do it for the, the accessory uses, especially because we were calling out that specific percentage.
Okay. All right. All residents of the... All residents of the town shall be eligible for membership. That shows up a couple of times as well. And my question is, I mean, I know there are clubs for like, that are specifically for women, say. And they're not, you know, they don't want men there, you know what I mean? So, or for, you know, alternatively for men or, you know, whatever. Is it fair to say that all residents of the town shall be eligible for membership?
Where are you looking at? I'm sorry.
I'm on page 4, at the top.
Well, that's why it's pink.
Yeah, I mean...
That was held for discussion. We talked about that when we went over the recreational districts.
You know, where like women only?
Well, this is only in the recreation district. And it's conditions and design standards within the recreation district.
Yes, okay.
So if you were to develop something within the recreation district, it's saying all, you know...
Yep, that's fair enough.
We had a question, the question came up, do we even need this?
Yeah.
You know, are these clubs going to be excluding people?
Could we just say that there's no private clubs? You can't exclude anybody.
But you do allow private clubs in the recreation district.
So doesn't that...
Oh, no, actually, you don't allow private clubs in the recreation district.
Isn't that kinda contradictory if we have private clubs and everybody's supposed to be allowed?
Well, it says eligible for membership. So...
Right, 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 I mean...
Private clubs by definition are exclusive in that you have to pay to be a member.
Right, like, to be a member of like the Franco-American Club or something. You gotta be, pay your dues. I mean, everybody has the ability to join.
Correct, or the Knights of Columbus.
Sons of Dave Prague of you. Sorry.
Thought it would be the Daughters of Dave Prague of you.
That's what I'm saying. It's so nice, it's just me.
The Royal Order of No-Holsters.
Yeah?
All residents of the town should be eligible for membership.
Okay. Uh, let's see.
Can we start at the beginning and go through so that we...
Sure, you wanna hit every little thing?
Yeah, so that we don't jump around and we make sure we get them. We'll start with page two, number two. There's a question of whether small should be in there or not. It was my understanding that the majority wanted to remove small. Apparently, it's, my memory seems to be incorrect, so...
I would like to take the negative tact and say, it must not be an indecent flock. No, I'm good with that.
I've yet to meet decent poultry.
Well, I guess it depends. I mean, you have 10 kids, you need a larger flock. Usually, the standard is two chickens per person.
Ducks have been much more pleasant than chickens.
No?
I mean, doesn't the Board of Health step in at some point?
Think it works with small?
I think small is preferred.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, I'm good with that.
I think it's...
That's fine.
Alright, so we don't even need to talk about it.
Yeah. As I said, my recollection was that small was removed and apparently I was incorrect.
Four. I think that's a superfluous comma. Use of a room or rooms in a, comma, in a dwelling or building. You just, you know, in a room or dwelling.
Kedoke. Page three.
Nothing.
Alright, so on to page four.
So that's where we go, all residents of the town should be eligible for membership.
Correct. All of the pink highlights are held for further discussion from previous meetings.
In case of the proposed adjacent plan of residence.
I think that makes sense. Yeah, but see, then, don't we, this is where I run into a problem. So if you are, let's say you're in a planned residential area, right? And they have a clubhouse for the people in the planned residential area. All members of the town shall be member, you know, allowed to apply for membership? I mean, that's kinda crazy, right?
Well, but that's not a...
Shall be eligible. That's, you know, eligibility has something to, you know, do with...
Shouldn't it be in the case of a proposed? Or is there a specific one? Number 10?
Are we dealing with adjacent, I mean, plant, no, ooh, sorry about that. Folks are home. Yeah, why is that under recreation anyway?
I think that's why we're still...
Should that be under recreation?
Because it was in there and we were debating on whether it should be.
Correct, correct. All the stuff that's held for further discussion currently exists in the bylaw. And it was whether or not it needed to be retained, modified, or deleted.
I see, I see what they're saying, in the case.
I think what they're saying is in a recreation use adjacent to a planned residential area, special care should be taken to coordinate the development of... I think they're inferring that the planned residential area exists and a recreation use is being planned adjacent to it.
Yep. That makes sense then.
The special care, I believe, would be to locate any facilities close to the planned residential facilities and away from the open areas of the planned residential area. Again, I'm trying to parse this together from what's written there.
Yeah.
So, I mean, this is the time if we want to modify it to look to do that.
That should be clarified because to me, that says something different, that it should take a more holistic approach to the whole, you know, should include the neighborhood and look at the neighborhood, how's this gonna integrate with the neighborhood? Not necessarily put it right next to it, you know what I mean, to make it here and preserve the open space, but to make it usable by the planned neighborhood.
Sure.
So, that, some clarification would help.
And, you know, I would say in the case of a proposal...
That's what Matthew said too.
Adjacent to, adjacent to a planned residential area, special care should be taken to coordinate the development with the planned residential area. So you wanted to say coordinate the location of the facilities to provide maximum usable access of the development by the planned residential area?
That's what I think when I read it, but I understand your perspective is slightly different, but also valid.
Well, and again, I think it all depends on what you guys wanted to say.
Yeah. I don't think it should be there at all. I mean, planned residential area is a special permit for your planning board. And any proposed use in the recreation district would at least a bare minimum have site plan review, approval, right?
Yeah.
So as long as we've got our eyes open and something comes up...
But again, you're having your confidence in the current board.
But I assume that everybody else is gonna have two eyeballs as well.
One would think.
Well, no, I kind of, I agree, and also, it does, it's a complicated, what they're suggesting is more complicated than just special care. You know what I mean, so...
It popped out as what?
It's a little vague.
Yeah.
So maybe lose it altogether.
Consideration instead of care.
And I took a look, I took a look at IJS, I didn't see any spotty houses around the perimeter of the recreation district.
Also means something, you know, that you could take that in a legal sense. So, what is adjacent planned residential area? Care will be taken to coordinate the development, I don't know what special here. Care will be taken to coordinate the development of the planned residential area. And you can lose the if any, because you've already said, in the case.
Yeah, of.
So if any can go.
Why don't we just care with residential use adjacent, any residential adjacent use? Why is it, I mean, why has it gotta be a PRA? Couldn't it be a cluster? What if it was a subdivision?
Yeah, that's a good point.
What if it was, you know, anything?
I agree.
Why are they calling this specific case out?
Yeah, why is that out?
With current residential use.
I think that's a way that the recreation district, I'm sorry, Greg, go ahead.
I was just, I think that's, I was just asking for the development with the current residential use, if any?
Yeah, and I think that the recreation district was originally developed to coincide with a massive PRA.
Okay.
I think it was going to be like Pine Hills of the 80s.
Well, they're building one in Littleton right now, Cooper Farms.
Built the golf course and none of the housing ever materialized.
Yep.
So I think originally, it was supposed to be, excuse me, houses on golf course and coordinating the development of the two together to make a cohesive and, you know, monolithic development. I don't think that's necessarily going to be the case any time in the future.
Yeah, so I'm not opposed to getting rid of it for that reason. I mean, I think that you can, you know, as a developer coming in, they shouldn't be necessarily held to, you know, integrating it with the, what is essentially gonna be what, a golf course and a, who knows what else?
Well, I think we have to think of what is gonna be recreational and not just now, but I mean, in 20 years from now or whenever this gets revisited, so.
That's a good point.
I would be more likely to agree with Matt, that I think it's something that we should keep, but we should change perhaps planned residential area to adjacent residential.
Okay. In the case, a proposal is adjacent to a residential area.
Yes.
Care will be taken to coordinate the development.
With the planned, with the residential area. And not if any. Okay, this next one. Oh, you know, you've got some numbering issues, right, throughout, that have to coordinate with the new...
Yeah, yeah, yeah. This is just for us, yeah. The numbering stuff we'll figure out as we get ready to put the proposal together.
Do we keep nine? Do we say we're keeping it?
We didn't. I was gonna go back to that just now.
Okay, so in 11?
Wait, nine.
Nine.
Oh, I'm sorry, are we back at nine?
Yeah, so are we keeping nine or not?
I think we should. I think that, you know, if there was a desire to have Irish, Italian, Franco club in town, that would probably capture about 90% of the town. But it would exclude certain individuals. So I think that it's necessary, even though it sounds pretty obvious, I think it's a necessary protection.
I think that's true, especially given that it's, yeah, we're setting aside recreational. I agree.
I agree as well. Alright, so 11?
Sounds good.
11, yeah, down at 6.1 of this bylaw, right? The like seventh line down, third from the top. Provisions for adequate wastewater disposal, semicolon, provisions for adequate refuse disposal, you're missing a semicolon, provisions for crowd control. See that?
Yep.
That's...
And then number 12, do we want to limit recreational development to 10% of the lot to impervious?
I don't think so.
Why?
Well, because if they wanna build a basketball court or is...
The hockey, the hockey thing that they proposed.
Is the solid astroturf considered impervious surface?
Yes. And this is only within the recreation district. This isn't recreational uses throughout town, just within the recreation district.
Yeah. Well, no, I'm just saying that, I mean, you could, you're right, but you know, that, if you limit it to 10, right, then you're, basically what you're saying is similar to what we just experienced.
Does that include buildings?
You're just not, you're just limited to not, it can't be astroturf. It's gotta be regular turf.
Well, but look at what like Apex Entertainment, Marlboro, it's a huge entertainment, so like go-kart track, all sorts of stuff that's impervious surface.
But that's all within a building?
No, it's outside. There's a lot of it's outside. The building counts as impervious surface. I just don't wanna limit.
Well, without a limit, I mean, then we run the risk of, I think with us trying to remain a rural town, then, you know, we want kind of rural activities. And without a limit on impervious surfaces, then you run the risk of a building. And is that the type of recreation that we wanna have in Lunenburg, is indoor large facilities?
Well, and I'm not saying that we, I'm not even necessarily saying that we eliminate any coverage requirement, but is 10% the limit that you want?
Yeah, that's...
Do you want 25%?
Yeah, I'm not saying unlimited impervious surface, I'm just saying 10% seems small.
So what would be the alternative? I'm sorry, Dave.
No, that's...
What would be the alternative, 15?
I'm not proposing an alternative, I'm saying, you know, 10%. Let's take the golf course for example. Now, the golf course is 120 acres on the site where the golf courses are.
122.67.
Okay. So, you know, 10% of that is 12 acres. That's a, that's a pretty significant impervious area. Five acres, much, much less significant area.
It's the parking lot.
What's that?
If you had a five acre thing and you...
Yeah, well, exactly.
It's a parking lot, so you wouldn't be able to put a building or anything else.
Yeah, yeah. So where is it, Greg? Where's your tolerance?
I'd say probably 20. I mean...
Matt, who you got for...
I'm not entirely sure we need specific to recreation max or min. We've got a number of other maximum requirements in other areas. At least two, right? We've got building coverage, oh, wait a minute, I don't have the dimensional, the new, do I?
We don't have building coverage in our dimensions. There are other...
Lot coverage.
I thought it was 85%.
I'm not sure I agree with that, just because, while you're looking that up, because, you know, we are dealing with a, it's a different, it's a distinct zone.
Well, look at like the deck hockey. If they wanted to put, that's impervious, they pave it first.
But they did go with a crushed on parking lot.
Parking, yeah, but if they wanted to pave the parking lot, then it wouldn't happen. And the only reason we did, and they were talking about paving it in the future.
I think the crushed on parking lot was a financial issue more than a...
Saying that, I'm just saying that there are alternatives and it's outside that zone. I'm saying that I think you could have a minimum that is specific to a distinct zone, like recreational.
Well, you think about, you can get about 100, 120, you get between 100, 120 cars per acre. Either it's gravel or it's paved. It doesn't make any difference really. So if you've got 112 acres and you go with 10%, then you can put 12 acres of parking lot and then entirely outdoor recreation with no buildings. Or 12 acres of a mix of parking and buildings. A one acre building is huge.
It is.
But then when you think about it, if you've got 112 acres, do you wanna limit your attendance to 1,000 people?
Maybe you could do it, well, maybe you could do it up to a certain amount of acreage and then increase it.
Look at Stillman Country Fair.
Yeah.
There was over 4,000 people there supposedly, right?
Yeah.
And that was only about three, four acres that they were using?
Yeah.
And then the parking across the street was probably 15, 20 acres, so...
But that's, yeah, that's...
Yeah, but we're just talking impervious surface, that.
No, we don't have a lot coverage minimum, not townwide. We have some district-specific lot coverage requirements.
So that's what I'm saying, so this would be similar.
Correct, this would be similar to in the commercial or industrial district.
So we've got 80% in commercial and industrial.
I think it's 85. And I think it's up to 90 in industrial.
Yeah, my thing. I think the intent, to go back to what Michael Ray was saying earlier, the intent of this zone is to maintain that
Yeah, oh, yes, correct.
Good drainage, healthy land. And healthy land and impervious surface don't really...
Well, no, there's, okay, so roof impervious, roof is clean runoff. You can direct charge, recharge that into the ground. If you've got a parking lot, then you've gotta mitigate.
Yeah.
You've gotta, and we've got stormwater bylaws that are gonna require the mitigation and ways that they do that.
Yep, understood. I'm just talking about aesthetics.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, can you imagine if, God forbid, Stillman said, boy, I get a lot of...
Talking about maximums and minimums, I always look about how it's gonna come back and bite us at some point. That's just my thought process.
Once land's gone, it's gone. I mean, I don't know many people that are, you know, tearing, ripping up parking lots and building parks. So, I mean, I think 10% is good.
Primary school, they wanna do that.
That's something that could always have relief gain through ZBA, isn't it? Is that a dimension or...
Yeah.
Yeah, and again, I mean, it was a discussion point that the board said, oh, we see this here, we don't know what we wanna do with it.
That's true. If they have the ability to seek relief from it, then that's fine. Then we can take it on an individual basis.
Yeah, so I would...
10% is good.
Yeah, 10%, I would stick with 10%.
So we could put generally no more than 10%, but that's not.
No.
Yeah.
No.
You want, you want to keep it hard if you're gonna.
If they can seek relief through the ZBA, I'm fine with keeping it at 10.
My next thing's on page five, so if anyone else has something.
Anything on four?
That was four, wasn't it?
Yeah, that was.
Well, that was.
Oh, anything else?
Yes.
Five, I've got preferably, instead of preferable.
Adonde.
Adonde?
Yeah.
Okay.
At where?
Oh, catering services?
Sables. In catering services?
B, the final, yeah, the last sentence in B, or maybe it's only one sentence in.
Preferable, preferably, yes.
Yeah, it should be preferably, and that actually appears at each one of those. It's catering services on the next, at page seven, so. And then there's all this red. What's the red?
What red?
Well, for instance, it's this, you know, is this necessary?
Suggest.
Any permissible accessory use? That's what you're suggesting to add in?
Yeah.
Uh, those are, those are changes that the board approved or made.
Okay. Yeah, I don't have any changes to those or anything. I just was curious.
Or that I suggested. I don't know which it was.
Page six, got the two, there shall be no exterior.
Yeah.
Where are we here?
This is language that was in the limited business residential district.
Yeah, this is the area along.
This is from the village district, yeah, out 2A to probably right about where Tanner Cole's place is.
I'm not sure what that means. There shall be no exterior.
Well, that's like the guy with the garage. Garo Construction across from Tanner's.
Yeah.
Or Thomas Fuel.
Right.
Thomas Fuel.
Right on the, right off, right when you come past Chestnut Street on the right.
Yep.
They, they have their office and, and fuel delivery service out of there.
Oh, they do?
Yeah.
Oh.
But it looks like a house.
You'd never know it.
Yeah, it's a nice house. Kind of hoping that would come up for sale. So, okay, so there shall be no exterior evidence of the non-residential use of the structure. Okay.
There was some discussion by the board whether or not they felt that that was something they wanted to continue to have along that stretch or whether they want to allow people to be somewhat more commercial along 2A.
No, I think it defeats the purpose. I think, you know, at least the way that I understood it, when people were discussing, discussing it, when we were having that discussion, it sounded like people wanted that area to look like the neighborhood, but to also allow.
When we were having the discussion here at the.
When we were having the discussion here, yeah.
So I think Mass Ave has between 7,000 and 8,000 cars per day, average daily traffic. And that's one of the highest. It's electric Ave and then 13. Electric Ave and 13 are over 10,000, I believe.
Electric's 12,000.
Right, but, um, 2A is a, geez, give or take. So that's one of the most heavily traveled roads in town. Just as devil's advocacy.
I support 16, and, um, I think number seven should be deleted.
Can I just ask?
Bless you.
Thank you. So Matt, you're, um, saying that you would be in favor of that being more.
Well, if we've got businesses along that stretch, then they're, they may or may not have the opinion that, that, that Mr. Cole had was that, you know, they, they can't see me. You know, and if it looks like a house, they're not going to stop. You know, they'll, they'll find you in the business listing if you put yourself there and it becomes available and they look. But, and what are the, the sign, the sign, signage are probably fairly restrictive.
Well, that's, see, yeah, but what you're talking about, to me, seems more like you're talking about a zoning change, like changing it to more kind of just commercial.
Well, it's, it's no, it's no secret that I'm looking to change, to update the map to indicate our infrastructure improvements in the last 10, 15, 20 years.
Okay.
But.
I think Mass Ave is an artery of this town. And that it, you know, when you drive through a community, you kind of get an image of what the community is. And I think that if we develop Mass Ave too much, then I think it's going to certainly give an entirely different feel of, uh, of the town when you're in it and driving through it. So I, I do agree with Mr. Allison that there are certain parts of town that definitely need to get rezoned. But I like their, I like number six. And I think that number seven should, uh, be deleted.
I would say on six that I'm, I'm in favor of keeping it in only because I think that you can. I come from, I came here from a community where you can develop an area and still maintain a facade that, that works to benefit the town. You know, it's, in terms of the town's image, and I think that you can do both.
So, and.
Over time.
Hearing this discussion back and forth and looking at what the words say.
Mm-hmm.
My only criticism of number six
Mm-hmm.
would be it says there shall be no exterior evidence of the non-residential use of the structure. So does that include zero signage?
No, I am in favor of the signage.
So should there be a disclaimer of, with the exception of signage per section?
Undetermined yet?
Yeah, well, no, well, the, the section, the sign bylaw, because we have a sign bylaw that currently governs that section.
We do, and, yes, and then, and then, and then we'll get to that and re, and re.
Correct, and then recode it to, to, but I, I just, if we're going to make that change, to me, if, if you tell me you can't have any exterior sign that the building is used for anything other than residence, that means you can't have a sign, freestanding on the building, anything. It just needs to look like a house.
Yeah.
Well, that's not what this says to me, but yeah, we can make that. I would say you, you add that qualifier, absolutely. What this says to me is that it should still look, it should have that. Whatever that look is, you know, the colonial look, whatever is in.
Residential feel.
Residential feel. So that you're, and by doing that, you are absolutely limiting the type of business that's going to go in there. But it's, it's a, it's a, still a very large.
It's called limited business. I mean, there is a significantly limited
Yeah.
amount of uses that you can put in that district.
Yeah, but you would expect to see the kinds of things you do. The oil company.
Correct.
A dentist's office, a doctor's office, an accountant.
With the exception of signage.
That's number five, though.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, it's already there. Sorry, it's already there. Well, it wasn't in pink.
That's still saying there should be no exterior sign. What is, what is?
I do not respond to anything that's not pink.
It's a definition of an announcement.
That's what I'm looking up.
Because, uh, again, after attending the economic summit.
Oh, I'm all in favor. Yeah, we got to get to it. We got to get to it.
They, they just have to promote, be able to promote their business, whether they can see the business or not. That, that was a reoccurring thing from everybody is we need to support each other and support ourselves.
Absolutely.
So are we all familiar with, with Groton, Senator Groton?
Yeah.
So they've got that, they've got that bank that looks just like a single family house.
Yeah.
But then you've got Bank of America and you've got this big bright ATM.
Yeah.
Now, would that, would that, would that fit in number six?
No.
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 Okay, I didn't think so.
If it were on the side, if the ATM's on the side, you know what I mean?
Right.
Yeah.
Right, sure.
Yeah, back of the building.
So announcement.
But the signage would have to be something similar to what they do in, you know, other town, Sudbury does it, you know, um, um, all the, you know, eastern, eastern block towns, you know what I mean?
Eastern block.
Wellesley, yeah.
Stalin.
Weston Whalen, all those towns, you know, you can't, it's got, just like Tanner was saying, it's got to be lit from the ground up, you know what I mean? Nothing self-lit, internally lit.
There is no definition of announcement sign, so I don't know what an announcement sign is.
So then maybe we should change number five.
Except for a sign in accordance with the provisions of the sign bylaw.
Yeah.
Well, why don't we just strike five and combine it with six?
That's what I was thinking.
Sure.
With, so delete five and number six would say.
Number five.
There shall be no exterior evidence of the non-residential use of the structure with the exception of signs allowed through the provisions of section 6.5.
Right, perfect. Good. I like it. Existing residential buildings shall not be destroyed.
I have to see, normally I don't, the time of our meetings doesn't matter so much, but tonight it does.
Oh, um, yeah, do we need to take a motion to continue past 9:30?
No.
10:30?
10:30.
Oh, 10:30, right. Well, hopefully we won't have to do that.
Buildings shall not be destroyed to permit.
No, tonight I have to unfortunately head out of here really soon.
You're leaving?
But I, I can wait about 15 more minutes.
Okay. Existing residential buildings shall not be destroyed to permit new construction except for another residential building.
So basically, how I read this is that you can't tear down a house to build a business.
Correct.
What if you had a house with an adjoining business in the same building?
I would say you couldn't do that.
I would say the only way you can tear down a house is to build another house.
I know a farmhouse in Maine that they tore down and rebuilt in the exact same image of the first one. Because they needed to. So what was, what's wrong with that? I mean, something.
I don't, I don't have a problem with that as a, as a practice. This, this says you can't tear down a residential building to build a commercial building.
Oh, yeah.
Even if it looks like a residential building.
Oh.
But again, what if you have a residence with an attachment that is a business?
Like the, um, one that we do have.
Like, like an accessory, you know, if you wanted to build your house.
So this, this sounds like they're actually trying to eliminate businesses from the district.
There's a lot of things that sound like that.
Okay, I, I don't.
We're trying to eliminate residential.
I think if you want the residential feel, you have it covered under the other language that's in there.
Yeah, we need the opportunity for, for, for people.
Especially to build new buildings.
We should delete number seven.
Yeah, so seven should go.
Yeah, I agree.
Consensus?
I agree, seven should go.
Yeah.
Get rid of it.
Catering services, preferably again in catering services.
Anything else on six?
No, for me.
Anything on seven?
Preferably. Seven catering services.
I remember number eight. Page eight.
Page eight, number eight?
I remember that conversation. Page eight, B3.
Page eight.
B3.
Page eight, to the bottom. Help for further discussion.
Oh.
Oh, the sufficient pedestrian facilities?
Above that, number 10?
Yep.
Um, B, display may be permitted in areas visible from the public right, it's, you, you've got a plural, it should be pluralized. Whichever one you choose on, you know, decide you want to go with rights of way or right of ways. It should be.
Oh, I see, right of way or, and neighboring property or rights of way and neighboring properties.
Yeah, it should be rights of way or right of ways. Either one is, except rights of way is correct in all cases, and right of way is correct in this case. I mean, right of ways, so. You can choose. And then down below, oh, we'll get, the next one is, I have is your, yours, and then I've got one.
The site shall have sufficient pedestrian facilities to allow access to the entire site. So I don't really like that.
I do recall that.
This is for what? Where are we here?
We're in, um, commercial, I believe.
Commercial. Uh, yeah, that.
To be three.
That's. That's incorrect. That shouldn't be there because if you have a yard that you're gated, you know, you've got gated goods, you don't want public access to it. You don't want public access to the entire site. You might, and you might not even want pedestrian access to it, you know what I mean? If you've got heavy machinery operating inside of a certain area, you don't want a lot of access.
I think, I think that what Mr. Bernie mentioned last time we brought this up was that it's really about sidewalks, that you're, you're, you know, I think the example you gave was Walmart, um, on this one, if I remember correctly. So I, I think that there needs to be something here, but I don't like the language entire site, so. I mean, how do we find a better phrase that says?
Walkable.
Open to the public?
Walkable.
Walkable, yeah. Something that gets you to the property.
How about from the right of way to the.
To provide appropriate access.
Yeah.
Then it's appropriate.
Appropriate access, yeah, appropriate.
Okay.
Access to all public spaces?
Just the site shall have appropriate access.
B3.
Appropriate pedestrian access.
The site shall have sufficient pedestrian facilities to allow appropriate access.
Appropriate pedestrian access.
Well, to.
What's wrong with appropriate? That way.
Well, I'm just thinking it's got to be to the appropriate part of the site as well, so it's got to be appropriate access, but not to the entire site.
How about to public facilities?
How about just in and out? Because they're going to have, if it's their site, it's a private development, they should have the say on who gets to go where and how they flow go.
Like the motorcycle place, they got the building, but then they got the fenced off area.
Why don't we say to the, to public facilities?
Right.
And that way they're creating public accommodation.
Yes.
To the, the parts of the site that they're allowing everyone to have free access to.
Yeah, that makes sense.
So the site shall have sufficient pedestrian facilities to allow appropriate access to public facilities.
Yes.
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 I'm still torn on that, because the issue then is now you're making it so that if you think of that language and you apply it to the Walmart Plaza now, wouldn't this then require sidewalks through parking lots, sidewalks? I mean, all over the place.
It's appropriate access, well, I mean, it's.
Well, not necessarily, yeah, it, it is sufficient pedestrian. It might not be sidewalks, but it is, you know, you can walk it. It's not like, you know, where they're putting those huge, you know, rocks down the street and that they flood into the, into Pleasant Street all the time, that.
But I can't think of like any larger sized parking lot that would have like, I mean, look at like the John Fitch where the scratching dent is all that, that's
I think what we're saying is you just be able, it needs to be walkable.
The motorcycle place, it's wide open parking, you have, you have, I mean, you can't require them to put sidewalks.
I don't want a future board to interpret this to mean that you have to make your site fully pedestrian, you know, friendly.
Well, that's the, that's the ADA.
But, I mean, pedestrian facilities could be a striped area on pavement.
Right.
That is dedicated to pedestrian access.
Yes, I remember mentioning that last time.
So, you know, yes, ideally protected dedicated sidewalks is what the.
Preferable.
Is what the ideal is, but if you can provide pedestrian access in a dedicated facility that would meet the spirit of the, the, the language. Essentially, it's to keep from and you, you, excuse me, can't legislate behavior, but it's to give people a place that they know that they can walk as opposed to just roaming down the travel aisle.
Correct. No, I think the idea is if you, you know, you think of someone in a wheelchair, right, and you think of them pulling up on the sidewalk, you want to make sure that they can safely get from that public right of way into the building.
Can I just back everyone up?
Pedestrian and, and wheelchair, those are two different requirements.
If, if I may just back everyone up, these are subservient to if, if there is more than one building on the site.
Correct.
So I think they're talking about interconnection.
Mm-hmm.
So like Walmart.
So I'll change what I'm saying then and say a nice family with their kids. So I'll change what I'm saying then and say, a nice family with their kids. So, if you have a nice family with their kids, you want to make sure that they can get onto the site, get to the location, and get off of it safely. And, but we don't want to somehow impose a system of trails.
Right.
All over their site. So how do we word this that's not imposing trails?
Yeah, I don't like the word facilities to begin with here. So this site, if we narrow it, take it down, site shall, the site shall allow... Site shall...
To all facilities?
The site shall have sufficient pedestrian, yeah, shall have sufficient pedestrian access to...
All public facilities?
Public facilities, yeah.
Site shall have sufficient pedestrian access.
To all public facilities.
To all public facilities, yeah. That way, you're not talking pedestrian facilities.
They're having sufficient access, meaning they have a place to walk.
You gotta put sidewalks.
To all the places you're allowed to go.
Sidewalks are nothing.
And then I got all utilities shall be placed underground. We never stick to that. Never. That's in every freaking bylaw we got, and it's always like, ah, we'll put a pole there.
Like the solar field?
Yeah, all of them.
No, that wasn't side shoot because the, that...
Okay, so they claimed, they claimed what hardship?
What?
The, 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 the solar fields.
Pleasant Street, yeah.
Because of, because of the utility provided.
They all do, everybody does. They, they placed, Pleasant Street, they placed their utilities underground to the point that Unitil required them to take them out. Unitil said that they didn't have the equipment to maintain the cabinet on the ground.
Yeah, right.
It's like one of those use, you lie.
The majority of their utilities are underground.
So, I understand, but it is.
Except for the utility companies' utilities?
Yeah. Shall be.
Who should probably be the most.
I love the shall be. We just sound like we've got so much guts and then we go, yeah, put a pole there.
Well, and I, and...
You already know I'm gonna comment on nine E, right? You're on page number nine.
Oh, we still got D, which is pink. It's pink man! Building facades, materials and roof lines shall be reviewed?
Yeah.
Yeah. Definitely. That stays, yeah?
Yeah, we're all in agreement, right?
Yeah.
D stays, alright. So, what I don't like about E is articulation in the horizontal and vertical planes. I do not think that that language is clear enough to grandma.
See, now, Damon would understand that, because I think that's what Damon's always saying. He wants to see some architectural...
Articulation.
Articulation, yeah. Break it up, break up the masses.
So that's kind of what Wes was talking about, with his, instead of just being a straight face.
Yep, we have other, we have other things in the, we, I noticed we have one, you know, when two buildings, for instance, in the, in this district are, you have two walls against each other and this one doesn't have any windows, you have to have some...
Set off by so far.
Yeah, it's gotta have some kind of a fake pillar or whatever. So that's, maybe borrow some language from the center district on that.
So this is for commercial, right?
Also, you have to remove and.
So I think, I think that...
And the facade?
Do the grandma test, doesn't matter.
I think that's a little unreasonable.
What's a little unreasonable?
That you can't view flat roofs.
Your roof is flat, your roof is flat. Who cares what you're looking at? I don't, I don't, there's a lot of, this aesthetic stuff that just doesn't make sense to me. But, I mean, at the same time, I'm a farmer who complains about the housing development across the street.
But again, if...
I used to hate those fields.
If the street is upgrade from the building, you had no choice but to see the flat roof, I mean...
This is the kind of stuff that, that's kinda, I think, goes to the, what you're trying to achieve is, is a, is a...
I mean, we have...
A look for the town, you know what I mean? An identity for the town.
Don't we have architectural design standards through site plan approval?
Yeah.
So...
But I, I think that why I like E, I don't like the end of E, but I like the beginning of it, is I think that, you know, in a lot of commercial buildings, a lot of fixins are in the roofs. And so you have a lot of stuff going on up there. And I think that what you're, you know, the air conditioning units, a lot of heating units, there's a lot of stuff going on.
Why don't you say unless the facade design?
Yep, I agree.
Unless the facade design, I don't wanna say mimics, you know, but, uh...
I know Adam's precise.
Is in, is in...
And I do, so I think that your language choice is precise.
And I understand it not making sense to grandma, but it's also not a regulation that grandma's gonna deal with.
But grandma has to vote for it.
I can, I can sell it to grandma. I can sell it to her.
Not my grandma. Better bring a shovel.
Unless the facade design is architecturally compatible? I mean...
But I don't think that that gets you where you want to be.
Unless the facade design...
See, okay, so here's some, some verb, verbiage from, um, Village Center.
Which is architecturally in harmony with the rest of the neighborhood.
Site design, and this might help with the last one as well. Buildings shall be arranged in a manner that optimizes the ability of residents and consumers to access public spaces and pedestrian amenities. Buildings shall be oriented toward each other in a way that minimizes conflicts between pedestrians and automobiles, et cetera. You know what I mean? That kind of stuff might help. And I, it was somewhere in here. Open space areas, open space, nah, it's, I lost the part about the buildings, but... Somewhere in here. Yeah, talk about grandma. Uh, first floor uses shall have a transparency of at least thirty-five percent and no more than sixty percent. I was gonna, transparency, what? I lost it. But anyway, yeah, I mean, I think if you changed a little bit of the wording in that.
Unless the facade design is aesthetically pleasing? Let's just leave it totally up to us.
I think...
Yeah, we gotta, we gotta come up with something and move on.
Well, I mean, if, if it's just that, that you want me to try and reword, I can try and, I can figure something out.
And there's also in there for...
I think you understand what we're trying to do.
Yeah, I mean, I think if you just say, leave it at articulation, that produce articulation, period.
Yeah. And then also, um, that, you, there's, just, you know, um, second line of this, unless and the facade.
Yeah, I said that. You got that right?
Yes, yes.
Oh, and then on, so is everyone in agreement if you just change that to get rid of the, in the horizontal and vertical plane? Unless anyone can think of an algebraic expression that might...
I think articulation, I think you're right.
When I hear articulation, I think of a bus.
Yeah, yeah, like a...
Yeah.
But that, but that's what you want. You want some...
You want it to wiggle?
No.
But you, you want the appearance of wiggle, you want the appearance of texture, you want the appearance of...
It's a building.
Variance in the building.
You're breaking up a mass.
You're, you're breaking up the solid monolith of the building facade.
Good architecture these days should do that. Bad architecture doesn't, but, you know.
But so many people buy their plans online or from the top drawer of some shop architect who's, you know, oh, you want building fifty-six, here you go.
Yeah, that's true.
True.
Define articulation.
You're not articu, we're not...
It's defining articulation for him.
We're not articulating what we want.
All right, anything else? Uh, so...
You're calling my girlfriend.
Alright.
So unfortunately, I do have to get going.
Alright.
I don't know if I had any other, if we can table the RMDs until I can get a better read of the information that was provided today, that'd be good.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, this is, we're not even talking RMDs yet.
Okay. Well, I think we have, we have it on the agenda.
It's because it's been requested to be continued on the agenda.
Yes, so...
Put that on there just for you.
Yeah, thanks, appreciate it. Alright, if anything, oh, the last thing is, if I can just sidebar for a quick second. We were trying to have a get together last Thursday with the planning office and, but the snow obviously changed those plans. So would it be possible if we coordinate that again for this Thursday?
Uh, I cannot, oh, for what time?
It would have to be a little later though, for me.
I'm open, whatever.
Maybe about one thirty. Can you have a late lunch? One thirty?
Yeah, is this a potluck thing? We gotta bring something?
Yeah, I'm gonna, for the most part, take care of it, but...
Send us an email.
I can send you guys an email?
Yeah, Thursday sounds good.
During the day on Thursday?
Yeah.
Oh, not, not being...
No?
I'm getting off early, just so I can try this again.
I can't do evening. And I got a meeting in the morning, so...
Alright.
So we'll have an email.
See you guys. Alright.
Very good.
Thanks.
So, number five, oh, three.
Yeah, no acronyms, right? You got SPA, so you're gonna change that?
Says SPA throughout the whole document.
SPGA.
Do you have it? Do you have?
Special Permit Application, right?
So you got...
Site Plan Approval.
Put something in there. It's gotta say it at least once in the document, especially since this is broken up.
You know, I'll just, I'll just change it all.
Okay.
Good night, Michael Ray.
Good night. Thanks.
It's a simple, you know, search and replace.
Alright. Um, and then C, all paved, oh no, I'm sorry. B, above parking and loading area, all loading docks shall be to the side or rear of the buildings and shall be visually screened.
Yeah, with fences and bushes.
Shall visually screened.
Shall be visually, yeah, so visually screened. That's it for that one.
Sidewalks.
Should be provided from the street line. Yeah. From the street line. From the street line.
Is now a good time for me to plug the sidewalk fund again?
Yeah.
You can plug it all you want.
Yeah.
I'm gonna.
You know, you should, you should plug, um...
Should we put that on?
Community agreements, because that could fund it.
Yeah, yeah.
So is this a keeper?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Um, my only concern is, not that it's an actual concern right now, but what if you had a, uh, let's go back to Walmart, right, and let's say you did have a sidewalk.
Sidewalks to nowhere.
On two A, then you would have to provide one all the way to the front door.
Correct.
Okay.
Well, what's wrong with crosswalks?
What?
Crosswalks going through a parking lot. Why, why do you need a sidewalk going through a parking lot?
You follow what I'm saying?
From the parking areas.
From parking area to the building?
No, you'd have, you would need one from the street.
Okay.
You'd need one from Walmart from two, if there were on two A, you'd need one from two A all the way up to the building.
Throw in a where practicable.
There isn't one up on us.
Well, you know, honey, you should mention that. That's my next question.
What?
Well, wait until we get to ten. Are we good on that?
Yeah, we on to the next page?
Yeah, okay, so on ten. Practicable. Should practicable be defined? How about qualified? With, given the limitations of the surrounding topography. This would clarify that it is not an out based on affordability. This is what we keep running into with practicable, is that the proponent always gets the opportunity to say that it's an out for me to say that I can't afford it. And what we're really trying to say is, if we determine that as practicable based on, that's what we're trying to say. We're not, I, I don't think anyone here believes we're trying to say, you know, if you can, if you can flink, you know...
We're saying practicable for function over affordability.
Right, over affordability. So how do we int, intimate that within what we're writing here? So I'm saying, if we could qualify, natural features shall be retained to the extent practicable, and just say, given the limitations of the surrounding topography.
As determined by the planning board.
Or as determined by the planning board, yeah.
Does that work really well for a solar?
Because we keep running into legal issues with that. And if it is affordability, then just say affordability, where it's affordable for you.
So here again, we've got screening, landscaping and buffering.
So, you had sent practicable, practicable, you said in relation to the surrounding natural features?
Yeah. Practicable, I said, given the limitations of the surrounding topography. But, you know, you choose something that goes.
Given site relief.
Do we wanna pick an ending point here?
What's that?
Do we wanna pick an ending point here?
Okay, I've got one more on this page. Oh, no, it's the same one. Any permissible accessory use is comprised, and we said we're gonna go with that, right? Because of, it makes sense to you?
I'm, I'm pitching it. Uh, if you guys, you know, if you don't, if you guys don't like it, we can, we can get rid of it and it can be a dimensional variation. I think it just, yes, it's redundant, but it makes it easier for someone to read and say, okay, I'm more than thirty-five, but I can still do it.
Okay.
Because there, there's going to come a time when, you know, Johnny Widget comes to town and he only needs fifty percent of his, his building to be able to make his widgets, which he sells all over the world, but he wants to have a showroom where he really shows them off. And, you know, he's making the bulk, his primary use is building them, but showing them off takes up just as much space. And it just makes it easier for him to say, yeah, I can definitely do that here. All I have to do is...
Because it's spelled out.
Special permit.
Because it's spelled out for him.
Because, yes.
Okay.
Alright.
It doesn't get into, oh, well, what's a dimension? And most people look at the special permit dimensional and they're like, you know, I want ten feet instead of fifteen on the side.
No, I guess, I was going in the same direction you were going with, well, grandma's not the one who's gonna be, you know what I mean?
Yeah.
I'm just saying, I mean, you know, who's gonna be coming into town and going, hey, this commercial thing, uh, it's just, you know, they're gonna know what you're, you know, what their options are. But that's all right, leave it in.
The special permit dimensional is a very odd thing. It's distinctive to Lunenburg.
Oh, okay.
I don't think it's necessarily unique, but...
Oh, okay.
It, it, it's pretty distinctive and I don't think that everyone necessarily wraps their head around being able to do that. They automatically kick to variance and, and it's not necessarily the case.
Okay, okay. Oh, yeah, okay, you wanna do the next page? I've got, I can't read my notes here in the public.
For which one? Swear words in there?
What does this mean? At least fifty feet where the district joins a lot used or available for residential purposes?
Residential use.
Nope, it says residential purposes.
But it's residential use.
The plans are special conditions and design standards. Yeah, I think my point is it's not a, it's not a sentence? You see what I'm saying?
Come on. I didn't touch that one. That one, that's how that was.
Yeah, it's just, it's not even a sentence. It's just a phrase, at least fifty feet where the district joins a lot.
Mm-hmm.
Used or available for residential purposes.
Because it's a condition of number two.
Ah!
And it should say, I can, I can try and clean those up.
So, yeah, to the, to the area, and then, then that should be a semicolon or... Yeah, that just needs to be cleaned up, because I, I was just like, what does that even mean? And then safe access, by what measure? Under three, special conditions? By what measure? What do you mean safe access?
Safe access, come on, man. Access that's safe.
And I blew over the two that you wanted to discuss.
That I wanted to discuss?
Yeah, I think, I think this is a good start. I would recommend some general accounting standards for plant materials. That was for...
I think honestly, these are better safe for when there's five E here.
For next time?
Yeah. So I don't know if you wanna wrap that now?
Let's, let's wrap it up now, because I mean, I wasn't likely gonna need the workshop anyways.
Okay.
So we made it to page eleven, basically.
Made good dent in it, though.
We did.
Someone sounds tired.
Alrighty. Notices and communications, I believe those are scanned to us.
They were.
Uh, meeting schedule, January twenty-second. Do we have any thing on the horizon that you know of, other than possible?
I don't think we do. Um, just Mr. Cole.
Yep.
And, um, I don't know if you wanna circle back the Whalen discussion?
Uh, yeah, I think we, well, we'll see if you can get an answer by then.
From?
The ZBA or...
The building commissioner?
Just about the ZBA.
Sure, he can give me something.[1669.64]